Okay, I'm gonna call to order the March 21st, 2024 joint meeting with the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee. We should start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands. One nation, united, in this whole good thing.
Okay, and Paula and Sheri, do you guys want to open your, I think, your meetings as well?
Yes, I also call to order this joint meeting, March 21st, 2024, the North Finance Committee with the School Committee and Select Board.
Call the meeting to order 701, March 21st, 2024, for the School Committee. All members are present.
Okay, yeah, so all members are present on the Select Board?
We have two absences.
Okay. All right, so I don't know why there's such a big crowd here tonight. But we do, I did want to lay out some ground rules because we do have such a large crowd tonight. You know, the goal of the Chair of the meeting is to run an effective and efficient meeting, so we're going to keep that in mind. So I'm just gonna read off a couple of things, a couple of ground rules. So first off, if you wish to address the Board or any of the Boards, you must do so only after being recognized by the Chair. The Chair for the meeting tonight, I spoke to the Chairs or communicated with the Chairs of the Finance Committee and the School Committee earlier today, and we agreed probably it'd be best to just have one Chair for the meeting. So I'm the lucky person tonight. So if you want to be recognized to speak, you please go up to the podium and then identify yourself by name and address. Because of the large number of people here tonight, each person will be given three minutes to speak. Minutes cannot be deferred to other speakers, okay? This isn't Congress, you know? We also don't want to try to keep track of like, you know, I'm passing my two minutes and 13 seconds to this person. Alec is gonna keep time for us tonight. Again, this is just intended to keep us moving forward, to give everybody an opportunity to speak, and if anything goes wrong, you can blame him. If you've already spoken on an issue and wish to speak again, I may recognize people who are waiting to speak for the first time before those who have already had an opportunity to speak. And if you've already had an opportunity to speak on one issue, please confine your next comments to a new issue, okay? And please confine your comments to the items on the agenda. All speakers in this meeting will be treated with courtesy by everyone in the room. All remarks will be directed towards the Chair, and while I will allow questions to be asked at individuals, I will not allow cross-examination-type discussions. If there are people waiting to speak on an issue, the Chair will not accept a motion from a Board member until everyone has a head chance to be heard. Does that sound good? Sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. And last but not least, I do have a gavel. Don't make me use it. And I do have an air horn as well if the gavel doesn't work. So you can blame Jack Con, my goodness. So the first item on the Select Board's agenda tonight is the appointment of Bob Kimball to the Permanent Building Committee. So Bob, I don't know if you wanted to come up and say anything, just maybe express why you're interested in being on the
I guess if there are any questions. My background is in retail, but I have opened 37 new from the ground up retail stores over the years. I've had experience, built my own home here in Northern, so I've got something there. In the past year, my good friend Bob Madara realized there was an opening available, and I thought maybe I could, coming in at the carnival hospital, maybe I could help continue to get that process completed in a time of passion. So it's basically it for me.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Does anybody have any questions for Bob? Okay, so this is a joint vote, correct, between the Select Board and the School Committee?
It's not on our agenda. We cannot vote on it. We were not told that there was a vote tonight.
Okay.
Sent over the agenda.
All right, so we can't, well, we can, we can, can we vote and have them vote at another time?
Yes.
We can do that, right? Okay.
It doesn't look like it's on yours either, though.
No, no, it is. I definitely saw it on theirs, but
Was this an older version?
The one that we received today, the one that was forwarded earlier. I saw it on one version, yeah.
Okay.
Did they forward the older version today?
Yeah, I know it was on our agenda. Yeah. All right, so, all right, so I'll take a motion to appoint Bob Kimball to the Permanent Building Committee.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the fiscal year 2025 budget. I think probably the best way to do this is to get updates from the Town Manager and from Dr. O'Neil on the status of the budgets for the town and the schools. So we'll turn it over to Mike to start.
All right. Jen and I have been going back and forth quite a bit. I want to thank Jen and Denise and Sheri for meeting last week on it. It's obviously a long process, and this year it's a very tough process. Everyone's got a lot of work to do still. So with the original budget proposals that came in from all departments looking for level services resulted in a deficit of $5,583,029. And obviously, the departments all put time into that. The things that they submitted are things that truly they need. They're not, it's not, they're not looking for pie in the sky. It's truly stuff they felt they need to operate their budget. But some of the issues we run into is this year, the assessors were unable to provide us with any money out of the overlay surplus, which was $100,000 we had for our budget last year. Last year, we used $707,500 out of stabilization, and we used $1,935,536 out of free cash. And so this is a blobbing process. When that was done, we were only looking at using $700,000 of free cash. And with what we've been working on now is trying to get to 3% budgets. Still working on it. I know on my end, I have $144,000 still to cut out of our budgets. But we're proposing to use $1 million of free cash and increase the ambulance receipts from $850,000 to $1 million. So with that, even trying 3% budget would still be shot $1,375,697. So the next decision to be made on that is, do we do use money from the, what we did last year? Do we use some money from stabilization? Or do we do an override? I mean, those are the things we have to look at. Going below 3%, I think, would, I mean, it's tough enough as it is at 3%. Going below that would be very tough. Another thing, this year, our fixed and shared increased. We've been very fortunate over the last few years where our health insurance was going up 1%, 2%. This year, though, it's not bad compared to what I've been seeing in other towns. It went up 5.7%. And every percentage increase for us is $80,000 more in health insurance costs. So that's a significant hit to the budget. So those are some of the issues that we're all working with.
All right, thanks, Mike. Dr. O'Neil?
Thank you. So the School Committee has put forward a level service budget for the FY '25 school year. A level service budget allows us to retain exactly the amount of staffing positions and services programs to our students that we are currently offering. There are no new positions that are in this budget. There are really no new programs. And that is a 12.01% increase to retain that level of services. Financially, that's $4,166,987. As Mr. Yunus just said, we have been having a lot of conversations about what the realities of our budget is here. And I think it's important for the community to know that a 3% increase is a $3,125,794 deficit over level services. So those are pretty significant cuts for the School Department. This year, we are facing an incredible increase in tuitions for some of our students that are at specialized education schools based on their educational needs, as well as transportation costs, both for our students that are out of district, as well as homeless transportation, all of which we are mandated to provide. Those are significant costs. Additionally, we have been really fortunate over the last few years to have Essar grant funds, which were grants that were given from the federal government post-COVID. So with all of those funds now gone, we are no longer able to use that for staffing and programming. During our current school year, we are using $550,000 of Essar funds, and those will no longer be available.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I think we should discuss as Boards and see if anybody has any questions for the Town Manager or for Dr. O'Neil. Anyone?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan. Do we know on, excuse me, on the town side of the budget, police, fire, highway, do we know if there's any personnel impacted by these potential shortfalls? I know we've discussed this on the school side, but I haven't seen much in way of how that might impact some of the other departments in their service.
As I said, I'm still working on it, but one right now would be the public health nurse, is, my plan is eliminated.
And that's the only position at this point?
As of now, yeah.
Dr. O'Neil, I had a question on the Essar funds. So this year, you said this year we used about $500,000 for staffing?
Yes.
And do you know what it was last year?
It was close to $1 million last year.
Okay. So those are temporary funds used for operating expenses. So was there a plan when using those funds?
So it's the age-old issue of kicking the can down the road in order to save the day at the time. And so the last few years have been difficult budget years as well. We keep talking about the fact that this cliff is coming. So the previous administration chose to, you know, use that for staffing. That was definitely needed at that time. And unfortunately, eventually, those funds do run out.
I just wanted to add to that. Nobody, trust me, nobody in this room is more against using one-time revenue for operating expenses than me. However, I do think the Essar funds generally were fully on purpose, just to keep teachers in rooms. So I didn't love the plan, but it was the intention of the Essar funds, to be honest with you. So it alleviated for two years a problem that was gonna hit us anyways.
Yeah, and Dr. O'Neil, I'm not blaming you by any means.
Oh, no.
So please don't take it that way. I just, you know, using temporary funds like that, I mean, there should be a plan for when those funds run out, not, you know?
So as Denise has said, the funds were originally designed for safety measures. So we were able to use Essar funds to purchase masks or COVID tests or any of the cleaning materials that we needed. They were also designed to support students both academically and through SEL, as they're coming back to school full-time from the closures that happened. And what we've found over time is that this is a much more long-term problem in terms of students being academically ready for school, having those foundational skills that they may have missed out on. Many of our youngest learners that are coming into preschool and kindergarten at this time may have not received the early intervention services that they needed at a really key time, or they may have not had a school experience at the preschool. So they're coming to school for the first time in kindergarten, where it's, for many of our students, it's really their very first time in school. They don't really know how to do it yet. And so the other thing we've found is just that those academic gaps have just grown exponentially for students, in the mental health component and students' emotional wellness. So while those positions were designed to be almost like a temporary fix when kids came back, the needs of our students have really significantly changed in the last few years. And what we've really found is that those positions have just been really valuable. It would be a shame to give them off as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, I have a question. So you just mentioned that, let me just clarify, I guess, first. We're just doing a 3% increase. The only thing we'd be looking to eliminate on the town side would be a public health nurse.
Right now.
But
Public health nurse and overtime, police and fire, which
Well, because, yeah, I mean, we've been seeing the budgets come forward, and most of them are over the 3%, what they're asking for. Town clerk, highway, police, fire, council on aging, the 56% increase asked. So I'm just confused that it would only be eliminating one position if we just did a 3% increase. I feel like there would be a lot that we'd lose with just the 3% increase.
Well, you got my first draft of cuts, I think. And we did police overtime, fire overtime, some expenses, and right now, the current public health nurse, that would be the one position that would go. And we're still looking. We have $144,000 to go.
So if we use the $1 million in free cash now, that means we're not using free cash in the fall to supplement anything?
I, we don't know what we're gonna have for free cash in the fall. The concern is that as we cut these budgets back, we're not gonna have turnbacks. And if we don't have turnbacks, that's gonna affect what our free cash is next year. So we may need to hold on to free cash so we have it for the next year's budget, because we could be in even worse shape.
Right.
Yeah, sorry.
So Mike, I know that we don't currently have a town planner, and I don't know if you've considered or included that in the budget or not. I can't recall. But are there other positions in town that are not currently filled, other than that?
No.
So that does not eliminate the two newly created positions for the Council of Aging?
Yeah.
We, it has, the Council on Aging had, there would only be one position. They already have a position there. Part of it is funded, was funded out of Roper, and it would be one new position. We haven't eliminated that yet.
Any other questions?
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So when we started this whole budget process back in October, November, whenever it's kind of starting to look ahead of what we're looking at, we all obviously saw the writing on the wall. We were kind of told late February-ish that we were looking at possibly a school budget of a 4% increase. Then right before our meeting, we get a bomb dropped on us and puts the entire meeting in hysteria of we're not getting any increase, and we're looking at taking a fiscal year deficit. Now we're back to possibly getting a 3% increase across all town lines. What is, how has so much changed in two or three weeks of going from increase to nothing, to a deficit, and now we're going back up to an increase?
I guess part of the problem there is sharing information too early, maybe. Because, I mean, we still, if we didn't do, if we didn't do anything, if we didn't use stabilization, that, we were looking at $421,107 reduction in budgets.
So I guess then who was sharing information too early?
Well, we're trying to be open, so as we were going along, we're sharing information. This is what we have now. We don't have everything in. We don't have all our fixed and shared till, health insurance doesn't get set until, how many weeks ago? Was it end of February? Yeah, it wasn't until So we didn't even know until the end of February that our health insurance was going up more than $400,000.
I mean, I think just in the future, we really shouldn't jump, because I think we put people in this panic mode of what's happening for no reason, simply because we were just trying to get information out. That didn't, it wasn't really.
I didn't do that. I didn't put that out in the public. I was just sharing that.
Mike, so to clarify, if the Finance Committee chooses not to use free cash that is available or chooses not to use stabilization?
Right.
Both the town and the schools would see
Right.
a negative increase
Right.
over our current year. And that's something that would have to be addressed by the Finance Committee.
Correct.
It's not something that we have ready to go.
And just to make another point, because I did not realize this, if, like you said, you cut police and fire overtime, for example, your likelihood of having turnbacks in the fall is less, which means next year, free cash, that free cash is not gonna be available, or it could be significantly less. Okay.
So I'm sorry, stabilization was just mentioned. Did you, I said you said a million from free cash, a million from ambulance receipts. I don't feel like you mentioned stabilization.
Yeah. I had said that we're shot still $1,375,000. So we'd have to have a discussion. Are we gonna use some stabilization?
Mike, can you just, for the folks here, explain what stabilization is?
Yeah. Stabilization is an account that we hold money in that requires a 2/3 in general we vote at town meeting to take it out. And generally, they say you should have 5% of whatever your budget is in stabilization.
Yeah, I would point out that stabilization and free cash are essentially using one-time monies for operational expenses.
Mr. Pointman, I agree that we
You wouldn't point that out.
Understand the position we're in, just
Likely using your tax money to pay your credit card.
Right.
Yes. Makes it sense.
Sorry, go ahead, Denise.
Just a quick question, just so I understand. There's four different forms here that are March 20, 2025, estimated operating revenue and expenditures, all varying levels of deficit. What's the thinking behind each of these?
That's just, you have what was submitted by the departments for level services, which was a 6% on the town side and 12.9, I think, on the school side. And then we were just looking at different scenarios. If we did 5%, 4%, 3%, what would that mean as far as a deficit?
So the largest deficit is what was submitted?
Right.
And then the others vary upon 3, 4, 5?
Right. And we even, I think, gave you a 2.5 and 2% too?
Where would I see that?
It's from higher to lower percentages.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's on the
Down the bottom, where you see school and general government.
Mike, you don't have the extra copy, too?
Great, we got an email to us, but we don't
Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Denise.
Mike, just, X any remedies we're thinking about doing. Are we fairly confident in our numbers now? The numbers we have now, X the remedies, we're pretty confident. Those are the final numbers.
The thing that'll always change a little bit is the indirects. That's from water and soil, because that all depends on what the budget's ended up at the end, for the most part.
Generally speaking, the hard numbers are the hard numbers.
Yeah. In the state, we don't know. We don't get much anyway, so.
Sorry. How can we be confident in the numbers? We still have a 1.575 deficit. It's not level funded, right?
What's that?
How can we be confident in these numbers with 3% if it's still 1.?
There's no effect that's gonna be any change.
They won't change. Can we now plan going forward with the numbers we have, or is it gonna be a surprise?
Mike, how much do we have in stabilization right now?
Right now, we have $3,170,114.
So that's not 5%, of our budget.
What about free cash?
Free cash, we have 1.7. If we use a million, we'll have $700,000 remaining.
So Mike, how would this also affect, like, capital improvements for the fall or even coming up?
So
Because typically, I mean, it's been a while since I've been on there, but we, you know, have money that sometimes is free cash. So how does that affect some of our capital projects?
So right now, we only have a little over $500,000, I think it is, in capital. And so we're being very, well, I'm recommending that we be very cautious in what we spend out in May. Will probably leave us with about $200,000 unless we put some more money in. And then in the fall, hopefully, we put some money in. But right now, we'll be down to about $200,000. So with that $700,000 we have left, the first thing we're looking at is any articles on the warrant that require funding. And then we could use some of it for capital.
Now, so my other, another question. When we look at, you know, new construction in town, whether it's apartments or housing, or how can we or can we project what we might see for that? Like, I know when, a couple years ago, when we talked about the industrial park, we saw X, Y, and Z, whether it's building permits, if they're parking their trucks there. Can, is there any way that we can say, when the new apartments by McDonald's are filled, we're gonna get X amount, not necessarily because it's not from the residents, but their excise taxes, their, you know, the property tax? Is there any way to project that for the growth of the town?
Yeah. I know that the assessor has included that warehouse across the street from those apartments and the apartments in her new growth figure for next fiscal year. But her new growth is a little bit less than it was the previous year. And I know her, the assessor and the building commissioner are working today on permits that are out there and what they see coming in, so they can do just that.
So $5.5 million short, change whatever, that's when every department has submitted their budget. That's no one touching it?
Right.
Okay. And then number two, so if we took $3 million from stabilization and 1.7 million from free cash, that's 4.7 million. Obviously, it would offset us a little bit here, but we're still looking at a deficit of, give or take, $800k. Before anyone cuts.
Mike, just out of curiosity, I think you said there was consideration of spending free cash down to $200,000? Did I have that number right?
No, capital.
Capital, okay, sorry. Is it, well, actually, you know what? Let me put it on the table. Is there any reason we wouldn't spend, or I guess, what's the downfall of spending free cash and stabilization to zero?
The biggest downfall, to be honest with you, well, one, if we have an emergency, we're in big trouble.
I mean, we already have emergencies.
And two, we're about to go out to do the final bonding of the three projects.
Financing, gotcha.
I can't tell you, I know it does affect
It does, yeah. I never think about that. You're right.
Which, I hate to say this, but I don't, because I can't quantify how it would balance out, but if you had an override and we didn't have to touch our stabilization and we didn't have to touch our free cash, which would look much better for the actuariales when we go out to borrow, maybe the, what the taxpayers would have to pay on that would be less than it will be if we do that and then
And what's that final bond ever going to be?
The final bond would be
For the building projects?
Oh, yeah, the data.
In the fall.
I'm sorry?
In the fall.
We don't know the amount, though?
No, it depends on the history and everything going back.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, the final closeout of
Which project?
We borrow about 80% of the town hall and senior center of projects. So there's a potential 20% more.
So what people are seeing on their tax bills right now, next year, is the peak. It's gonna start going to start coming down for the debt exclusion.
Cody, answer that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Cody.
Mike, when we had the discussion last year, we recommended pulling the 700,000 from stabilization as a one-time offset. I thought, I think I remember you saying that the stabilization funds are directly tied to our credit rating and our ability to borrow. And if we don't maintain a level balance or as close to 5% of the annual budget, then impacts our credit rating, impacts our ability to borrow future.
Right.
Future projects.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Okay.
Did I say to you someone else?
If we do complete the reserves, the stabilization fund and the free cash, and use the 4 million into the 2025 budget, in 2026, we're going to be looking at a 7, $8 million deficit.
Well, that's the next question, right? If we do, what are we doing?
But how many, how many years have we been doing this? Right? It's been a long time. We keep taking from these accounts to pay. Right? So it's catching up to us. We all said that this was coming. We've talked about this clip for a long time, and here we are.
You can see, you should be chair. Denise, go ahead.
Good question for General School Committee. I noticed that the state budget has some proposed increases in the per pupil fee, busing, some like the charter school, that kind of stuff. Is that included in here or not included here? And I realize it hasn't gone through the House, hasn't been voted on, and it doesn't happen until July. I need to know by June. I understand all of those factors. But has that been factored, any of that been factored into here? Thinking we're going to get something.
So really, Norton doesn't really qualify for any of those things. When the transportation is all around regional transportation. So places like St. Mirholby that have a regional transportation system, they're looking at a greater increase in reimbursement there. The Student Opportunity Act that went in a few years ago, this is now the sixth year of funding that. Norton will still get $30 per student unless that minimum aid is increased at the state level. Last year, it went from 30 to 60. So we saw an extra $65,000, which is great. We're always super happy to have it, but really doesn't make a dent in some of those things here. It's, we're in a difficult position just in terms of where we are as a community. We don't have enough families that are considered high need to qualify for some other things. So it's, we don't, we don't imagine the needle moving very much.
Thanks.
And just on the, on the state aid, the big concern there is the state, they had a revenue estimate that they didn't hit. They adjusted it. They haven't hit it for eight months, even after lowering it. So they're in tough shape revenue-wise. So I heard a state rep on yesterday saying that they hope they can level fund local aid this year. So.
They cut a lot of the projects by 50%.
Right. We had a couple of projects that were affected by that.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Cody.
I just feel, like, we discussed it in, you know, call on Monday, and I just want to reiterate my hesitancy to utilize non-recurring revenues for recurring expenses. And I know Denise has on this a lot, you know, on, on School Committee. Part of the reason we ended up in this situation is we utilize those, those free cash. Free cash isn't free. It's a misnomer. And we end up creating, paying for new positions and expanding our spending in the fall. And it just kind of rolls into the discussion in the spring. People tend to forget about. And we are funding using free cash. That is not guaranteed to be there every year. And I feel like it's visually irresponsible to continue to push that. I know it's like ripping a Band-Aid off and can't just pull it all off at once, because it's that much more difficult. But we need to have serious conversations about how we're utilizing that free cash and making sure that we are not funding recurring expenses from it to the extent that we possibly.
Mike, I was just going to say, obviously, a lot of us agree with that, that we shouldn't be doing that. And I can't take credit for this because Sandy said it. But we now have to wean ourselves off of it. We can't quit cold turkey. So last year, we used 1.9 million of free cash. This year, we use a million. And next year, we try and work until use a little less. But we got to wean ourselves off of that. We can't just quit cold turkey.
Assuming we have it.
Right, exactly.
And I think that's a problem is, if for the next two years, we keep doing this, that fourth year, we're going to have to bring back some of that free cash from somewhere as well, to start the cycle all over again in, you know, five years from now. It's just this, it's this circle of insanity that we keep doing.
Well, I think the biggest issue, Cody's point, is we're using the free cash to try to button up the budget, but we have a number of new heads included in that. And that's going to be something that we're going to see come back every single year. And the biggest issue we have, which Zach, thank you very much, Eric and the FinCom meeting, is our personnel costs, our contractual rates. Every single year is over what we have for our 2.5%. And I get it. It's not easy to say we have to keep it to 2.5%. It's not cost of living. It's not competitive. I get that. But it's, we're chasing our tails here.
That's right. That's right. Townwide and the schools.
I agree. Across the board, everywhere.
That was my purpose of asking the personnel question, because we're upwards of 10% of our work staff. And we have to comfort positions. So, I mean, the schools are definitely feeling it. And I don't know about unemployment or anything like that, but that's another expense in the budget for all these employees who are potentially going to be laid off, whenever that is. They can collect until they find another job. And if the market's not that good, they can continue to collect. So it's just, again, it's just part of this vicious cycle that we keep in every year.
Paula, go ahead.
So I don't know if you guys have had the chance to figure it out, because I think you may have just heard about this 3% number now. How many positions would that mean? Do you know that yet?
3% is 25 to 28.
That's 25 to 28. This year, next year, assuming, again, expenses go up, everything costs more again next year. What's that going to mean next year? And then how much free cash will we even have to put into this next year? It's just creating the same problem again. And then, you know, just looking at the other departments, if we're not able to fund, like, say, overtime for the police department or fire department, what does that mean for making sure we have enough officers on the road or the station police staff in order for emergencies, you know, things that happen? That makes me worried. I don't know. I mean, I think the chiefs would be able to speak better to what that would mean, that not funding their overtime would mean for public safety in this town.
I think that's a great question. Do the chiefs want to come up and talk about that?
Always prepared.
Sorry, Chief. You promised.
It's Paul's fault.
I don't want just the schools to be on the hot seat.
Yeah.
Everybody.
So I guess I wanted to say a couple of things real quick. Is, my budget this year was a 4.9% level services budget, which is what I was directed by the town manager to put together a level services budget. There's not a wish list in here. I put some numbers together that I shared with the town manager. If there was a wish list, it'd be another $400,000. So overtime's not an exact science. There's a lot of things that, that happen with it. I mean, I've just sat down with Zach. I think, you know, Chief Schleicher's aware of it. Cody has talked to, I think, talked to a bunch of people about how we come to overtime. Back in 2018, our, our overtime was $438,000. This year's request is 466600. It's the same amount as last year. We are currently have, we just have one retirement. We have two people in the police academy. We have one person who's out on a long-term illness. We have another person who's out with medical treatments right now. So we're down a few people. You just kind of ask, you know, specifically what the overtime effect will be. So, you know, the cut to overtime will be a little over $108,000. Over 62% of our overtime is to backfill, to maintain three offices on the road. It's the same amount of offices on the road that basically has happened since I've been on the department. I had a conversation with the chief of police in Easton today, and their overtime is approaching 700,000, and they maintain four offices on the road. So, you know, if we're all healthy, you know, that overtime number can decrease, but it's not going to decrease to $357,000. You know, it would take some reassignments of personnel from administrative positions, which I'm kind of doing already, here and there as needed. But it would definitely, you know, I mean, it would be a big hit to us. You know, commonly, overtime's kind of low-hanging fruit. It's usually, I know the town manager hates this word, but it's usually cut at this time every year. And then there's some that's replenished in the fall. But it's not always replenished in the fall. And I'm, you know, I'm kind of at the, you know, from what I'm hearing and seeing, I don't expect any or all of it to be replaced this coming fall. So, you know, there's, there's some things that we can do, maybe perhaps deficit spend. You know, court is something that I don't have any control over. If somebody summons to court, they have to go. If they, if they don't go, there could potentially be a bench warrant for them. So training, if anybody's, hasn't been sitting under a rock for the past three years, we've, we've been coming to peace reform. There's some new mandates to it, but it's, you know, there's some reporting requirements and some, some new training that's come up that, you know, we're mandated to do. I know, you know, the word mandate comes up quite a bit, and I honestly don't like that word, because I think, you know, it's just, it's what we do to provide the best service for the town. So I don't know if you have any specific questions, but it's just kind of an overview of.
Well, that was helpful, Chief. And then for the fire department, the 1 million in ambulance receipts, would that, sorry.
Before they go to fire, I think, I think Joe has a question for Chief.
Chief, I know we talked about this on our FinCom meeting, but for the benefit of everybody else that's here now, can you explain to us, how many, how many officers will that mean on the road without the overtime? And how does that compare to what you consider our ideal number of officers on the road should be?
Yeah. So like I said, the minimum manning is, is three offices on the road. We have one on the desk, three on the road. And I really would not want, it's just not safe to go below that. So, you know, from an assignment perspective, we'd probably look at, look at taking some people from assignments, you know, some administrative assignments, as well as, you know, potentially detectives. And I hate to say it, but we'd have to look at where we stand with SROs as well. SROs come under my budget. They're not funded by the schools. Their overtime is not funded by the schools. It's strictly mine. So, you know, we'll have to take a look at what we do there. If they go to, and I'll talk about the SRO, if they go to something at night, a presentation or something at the school, or if they get a late call about a school threat, like, that's overtime. That's what it is. So I, you know, I have to deep dive deeper into exactly what we're, we're going to do. But this isn't 1990. It's not the 80s. Like, it's just not safe. You talk about officer burnout. If we have two offices on the road, like, that's, that's burnout. We can't close the station. We've tried that before. It's just, it's silly. It's, there's too many walk-ins that come in, too many phone calls that come in. So people are always looking for something. I tried that once when I first became chief to, to, to save on overtime. And it was just, it's just embarrassing, you know. So.
Just to clarify for people who might not know, the acronym SRO, Student Resource Officer. So it's the officers we have helping out in the schools.
Do I recall you saying we'd prefer to have four officers on the road if we, if we could?
So we're talking about potentially cutting overtime. But that really is a de facto position cut. You're taking, you're not letting somebody go, but you're taking a body off the road that should be on the road. So that is a position cut technically.
I agree.
Right? So, I mean, there's another position we're cutting. We're not calling it that, but that's exactly what's happening. We're cutting a position.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Clark?
You changed.
Off the hot seat.
Sorry, I was.
Thanks, Chief.
Going to bug a deputy chief.
Head fire.
The 1 million from ambulance receipts, would that be going directly to keep Charlie open? Because I, with that safer grant done now, how would we do that?
So, yeah, that's pretty much covering those positions to keep Charlie open. And pretty much everything that Chief Clark said. First of all, Chief Simmons wasn't able to make it tonight because he's ill. So I'm kind of hunting for him. So I'll do the best I can. But we've studied this, obviously, and kind of looked at the best, you know, scenarios we have. But cutting the overtime along with what Chief Clark said is, it's Station One. It's keeping Station One open. We have, our minimum manning is eight firefighters on duty. We have, right now, on the books, and I think I said this at the FinCom, that for the first time, we had a full staff of 10 per shift. But somebody got injured since then, so now we're down with that. So that's what ends up affecting that. When we have injuries, when we have, we have four people that are, that can retire basically anytime at this point. FMLA is a tough thing. We have a younger department. Last year, we had five people on FMLA that we had to backfill. So anytime that overtime, that overtime being cut, which I believe is $236,000 is what's being cut from the overtime account, it'll affect the Charlie station staying open. Sporadic. I mean, it's not going to close, depending on what we have. I mean, it's overtime, like Chief Clark said, is really hard to predict. We have a major incident. We have to cover a major incident. We have a long incident. That overtime, there's other things that's involved with the overtime. It covers holiday pay. So when someone's working on holiday, that comes out, that's $100,000 right out of the overtime account. It covers floating holidays. It covers adverse weather. Like I said, the FMLA bereavement, sickness, and everything else that goes along with it. So, you know, we're going to try to do the best we can. Going to try to still give the same service that we always have. But staffing is, is not going to be an issue.
Go ahead. And I think to your question, I'm not sure. For Charlie, you need three, a minimum of three people in that station. So if they, if they have 10 on a shift and they go down to eight, they won't be calling anybody in, and they'll have to pull people from Charlie back. So.
Which means we'll have to shut that station down.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Fire Department? Everyone? Okay.
It's not easy.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions for, for Mike or for Dr. O'Neil at this point? All right.
This is good.
Yeah, go ahead, Cody.
I just, I just, to the point that I was making earlier on free cash, about people forgetting about it. When we're looking at our fiscal year budget for the next year, you see that 1.9 million, and we're talking about cutting back on what we're recommending on free cash for the spring. Our recommended and approved budget at this time last year for fiscal year 2024, our starting point was $1,119,000. And we added another $816,000 from free cash spending in the fall. So starting, like, when you're looking at that 1.9 million dollar starting place, it's a false equivalent, because we added $800,000 in the fall. So if we're talking about scaling that down, a million dollars to be equivalent to 1.1. But that's not scaling down. We need to have a more realistic conversation about how much we're going to cut from that.
Okay, thanks, Cody. All right. So I think at this point, we'll continue the discussion of the budget with anybody from, you know, from the, from our guests here tonight. So if you want to come up and ask a question or have a comment, please come up to the podium, name and address, and Alec will try to keep you with three minutes.
Hi.
Hi.
These are just my notes, sorry.
Yeah.
Amy Martin for Bullock Drive in Norton. I am a citizen of Norton. I'm also an employee in the Norton School District. I'm a school nurse. So I do have a stake in this budget from both ends of the spectrum, being a town employee and also being a concerned citizen. My big question is, I have three questions. They're going to be small, hopefully not, I won't take too long. The first one is school choice funds. Just from looking at the numbers, it looks to me like there's a balance of a little over $133,000 right now. My question is, is that historically used up by the end of the fiscal year? And if not, is it able to be rolled into using something else as far as like a salary or anything else in education?
So typically, for our school choice funds, we have them allocated for certain things throughout the course of the year if we do not use it or we have funds left. If we do not use it, or we have funds left in other lines, for example, if a teacher is out on leave and they're not, and they're taking unpaid time, we can move that money to pay for whatever that school choice money was going to pay for. And we can put that back into be, into the revolving account to be used later.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, is a library media specialist necessary for school accreditation?
Is recommended, not required.
Okay, thank you. And one other question to the town manager, what would be your motivation and your rationale for eliminating the public health nurse in the town as the eliminated position?
So, we've kept some money in the account out of, for expenses, and we'd look at hiring someone on a consultant basis, so someone that could come in and do flu shots or anything else. And we also belong to a consortium of other towns, so hopefully that'll help fill the void, too.
And you believe the consultant rate would be less than the having a full-time occupational health nurse rate who is familiar with everybody in the town, in town processes?
Right, we're budgeting a lot less.
Have you had numbers on that, or is that just a projection and thought that that would do?
That's just a projection.
So, you're eliminating a public health nurse for the projection of having a consultant come in for less money, correct?
Well, the consultant would be working the same amount of hours as the public health nurse.
But you don't know what the salary would be, so you're eliminating a position in place of somebody who may save the town money as a public health nurse where safety of the town is a priority.
Well, they're only going to have whatever we budget, so they'll get, will only get as much.
But why would you eliminate a position already there for a consultant who has no stake in the town?
To save money.
But you just said they would be working to save them on their hours, so how would that?
I didn't say that. I said they won't be working the same amount of hours. We'll just be having the consultant come in when we need the consultant. And the amount of hours we hire the consultant will be.
But you don't know when you will need them because the public health safety, safety of the town is, should be a priority. So, you can't project when you're going to have a public health safety issue. That's what I'm saying.
No, we can't, we can't, we can't.
So, why would you not keep somebody in the town who is already familiar with the town position?
And we can't predict when having the Charlie Station would be better.
Right, which is why it's open.
In one town, and we can't predict when having three police officers on the street would be safer. It's just something we're forced to do.
Which is why those projected officers are going to stay on the streets.
Okay.
Per budget.
Right.
I'm just saying, the safety of the town needs to be considered with this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a, I have a question because I know there was a lot of discussion around school choice.
Yes, I actually want to clarify a point as well.
Yeah, so where did you guys kind of land on the school choice and?
So, Amy just spoke about $133,000. That is somewhere along the, all the documents we have. That's actually outgoing school choice funds. It's a very small amount of students that are Norton students that may attend other community schools. Our receipt on school choice is about 1.6 million dollars for this upcoming year. So, to answer your question, Kevin, the school planning has not yet voted on school choice for the upcoming year. It, a lot of it really hinges on what our class sizes are going to look like. If, if we're going to have to make cuts at the elementary level, I can't in good conscience recommend that we take in additional school choice students. So, really, that's a big factor here, and we're also going to be having additional conversations about some of those costs as well. So, I don't know if I've grasped it a little bit.
Okay, thank you. I think, Nick, did you have your hand up?
I was just going back to the public nurse. We'd also not have to pay benefits on a contracted person.
Right, and I think I heard, you know, the idea would be, you know, the senior nurse doing the flu clinic, you'd bring that person in just for that one event. Okay, yeah.
Hi, Calista Thompson, here at Keep Drive. I just had a follow-up question on the school choice piece as well. If we are seeing cuts to the school budget and 40 positions cut from the program, do we have any type of projection on what that would do to the loss, not only of school choice money coming in, but students in Norton then opting to leave the district, which then takes that $134,000 number and brings it up quite a bit? I imagine that's part of the discussion, but that's just something that comes up for a game.
It's really, it's very hard to predict that, right? Because every family makes the choice that's right for them at that time. If we're, if we're going to have higher class sizes, if we're going to be offering less extracurricular activities for students and families, they're going to look for other options. We know that that is what's going to happen. Also, if we're not bringing in any additional revenue, that is something that we have to think about, too. Our budget looks to spend almost about $2 million of school choice for the upcoming school year.
And just to, just to Jen's point, too, like, we can't cut school choice and then go to zero school choice kids. We by law have to keep them in. So, if we even were to cut school choice, it would be a
Ongoing.
A 10, 12-year project of, you know, this kid's now, this kid's now, he graduated through, but he's staying in the system. So, it wouldn't be a cut of 1.6 million dollars right away. It would be progressive over the, call it 10 years.
But, but those funds may be up for grabs if they then choose to go somewhere else instead of in the current program.
Yes.
So, you say those funds are up for grabs. What do you mean?
So, say of the 1 million dollars coming in from current school choice people, we have class sizes of 30, and we cut band, and we cut music, and half of those kids' parents say, why am I driving 30 minutes to go to Norton for these programs that I thought were amazing? I'm going to go somewhere else. So, the million is not stable, even if we choose not to take people in, they could just as easily choose to choice somewhere else.
So, by law, they don't have to stay here.
You have to educate them if they stay here.
Yes.
It's a, it's a good question, but there's a sneaky better question. And the sneaky better question is, tell me about this charter school in Foxborough, and what happened in the past, and where is it now? And if we do this, what happens in the future? So, some years ago, different administration, Dr. Brennan, he and I had a bunch of charter parents come in, sit down with us, just have a talk. A bunch of people in the room said, hey, why'd you guys order the charter? Said, well, we went to the charter because they had free kindergarten at the time. Why don't you come back? Eh, once we went, our kids met kids, they, so we stayed. And our numbers were, we were paying charter a million, over a million bucks. Close to.
Yes, close to 2 million.
Close to 2 million bucks came right out of our budget. We reversed that because we instituted free kindergarten. But if we're hitting a bunch of teachers, and right now, it looks like the focus is probably more younger than, than older with, with respect to what grades, and people say, the heck with it, I'm sending my kid to the charter. We know that that's a sticky situation. They stay there. So, all of a sudden, we could be looking at spending another 2 million bucks to have these kids go to the charter, and that actually, that just went up right there where they're, they're voting on.
Yes, increasing the charter rate.
I mean, that 2 million could be 2 and 1/2 million. So, that's the sneaky quiet question that, that I worry about, is where does this lead us to in five, six, seven years?
Yeah, I think we're a little more protected given their turnover in recent years, but that is turning around also.
Yeah.
But also, this use of school choice money is another case of using non-recurring funds for recurring expenses.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, come on up.
My name's Brian Stulters. I am the president of the board of directors for the library, so I'm speaking on behalf of the library. You're all here, just to let you know that the lighting and the heating comes from the library itself, not from the town. It comes from money that we raise, whether it's from the friends in the library or fundraisers or things like that. It's all grassroots fundraising. We ask for 4%. Mike asks 3. We're doing 4% because we need to go to 50 hours a week. We're at 45 hours now. There are 378 libraries in the state. We're one of four who's not 100% certified, one of four. So, if we go to 50 hours a week, we'll be 100% certified. We'll get a little more money from the state, which will help with buy books and programs and things. Everybody comes and they like the services that we have. You get the free passes to the, to the museums. That costs us money. We're not getting that from the town. We're raising money to get those every year to give to the people in town. The money that we get from the town is just for the staff, just to support the staff. And some people are still making minimum wage here. So, I'm just trying to promote the library the best we can. The library, the brick and mortar of the building is owned by the town. We rent it for like a dollar a year. But we've had expenses this past year where our endowment, we're only supposed to take out a certain amount of money, we're using that money just to get the building up to speed to code. We spent $14,000 this year just getting the sprinkler system back up into a code. We spent $30,000 on an alarm system. We had graffiti at the park, which we're in charge of now. Some of the graffiti was very upsetting to a lot of people. We're trying to put in security cameras down there. That's $5,000 alone just to put security cameras down to library, down by the park. So, costs go up, everybody knows costs go up. Insurance goes up, health insurance goes up, utilities go up, everything goes up. So, we're just looking for that. Mike asked, he gave us a 604 and change. We asked for 609, 609,000, a little more. So, I'm just trying to promote that extra 5,000. That extra 5,000 would get us to 50 hours a week. And we really, the town, the state is really pushing us to get to that level. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Brian?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Take a sore hand back there, Bill.
Gil Guevara, 111 Maple Street. Let me cram this into three minutes.
No chance.
Insanity, the definition of insanity is consistently doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. We've been doing that for 40 damn years. Anybody who's paid five minutes of attention to this, to this town budget knows that the answer is that we need an override. Unlike Easton, or Mansfield, or Ralph Attleboro, we have never, ever, in 40 years, passed an override to adjust our levy limit to be able to fund our town. So, the decision we have before us now is really simple. Either pass an override and fund the town to the level that we need the town to be at, or just say, no, I'm not going to pay more taxes, I'm going to live in a substandard town. Look around you. Do you see highfalutin spending all over the town of Norton? Do you see luxury apartments in the police station somewhere? Do you see all this stuff going? I mean, and we talk about, you know, going cold turkey, turkey from not, you know, from, transferring for one-time funds. Our turkey isn't cold, our turkey's dead. It's been dead for years and years and years. We do this constantly. We were doing it 20 years ago and 30 years ago because we postponed and we kicked down the road. And that's a waste of time. We're not fixing the problem. We're not addressing the real problem. And we've got to address the, the idea that, like all these other towns, at some point, you have to adjust the tax levy limit. When you only go up 2 and 1/2% a year, and the levy limit only accounts for maybe 50 or 60% of your, of your revenue, then you're really only increasing 1 and 1/4% per year. They say, well, run it like your family budget. Well, the problem is, in a town, the kids never move out. It's not a family, it's not a business. You can't start making a product that's not, that's not profitable for you. You can't do that. So, for God's sakes, let's face, but I will tell you, that if you throw an override together and you, you try to put it on in the next month or two, I'll probably vote against it because that doesn't make any sense. Because no one believes that you will have studied it enough, no one believes that you're going to be able to put together a proposal that makes sense, and you can talk facts and, and, oh, it's going to be terrible, all you want, but face the fact that an override is a political event. And because it's voted on in the end by the people, regardless of what the selectmen do, as long as they put it on the ballot, and regardless of what town meeting does, you know, I mean, town may have to pass it, but it has to go, so it's an election. You have to treat it as a political campaign. You have to treat it as, and I know that's, oh my God, you're putting politics into it. That's what it is. And we've got to start facing it. I've lived in this town for so long, I, this is my 50th budget cycle. We have Rob Peter so much, he can't pay Paul. Okay, we, he just, you can't. My God, let's face our problem. Either that or make the cuts. And maybe after one year of tremendous cuts, and I've been saying this for decades, after one year of tremendous cuts, maybe people will go, hey, that's it, we have to do something. You know, maybe they won't. But either way, we'll stop this stupid thing that we just keep doing year and year, talking about a public health nurse that we're going to cut. Yeah, that'll solve our problems. I mean, come on, let's get real. Either we're going to get serious about what's really going to fix this problem, or we're going to keep wasting our time like we, like we've done all this time. I say, let's put together a plan, let's construct an override that makes sense, that sets us up beyond just next year, because I don't want to be back here making the same stupid speech again next year.
I noticed that Mr. Guevara mentioned Mansfield. Mansfield has, they're looking at two options this year, either instituting a trash fee or an override, so it's the same. Jen, you're going to pay?
I'm going to be paying for the trash.
Mike, do you know what?
Paying for the trash.
Mike, do you know what, I'm talking ahead, how many overrides Mansfield has done?
I don't.
Why do we not give ourselves to Mansfield?
All right, does anybody else? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Go ahead. Name and address, please.
Alex Giazzella, 2 Robin Circle. This is more just a comment. I think we're asking the wrong questions, not about what we need to cut in this town, but what we need to keep in this town and how we can keep it. Hearing Dr. O'Neal speak, and I'm sorry, I'm very bad with names.
Can you speak, Bill?
Oh, sorry, hearing Dr. O'Neal speak tonight, hearing the chief of police speak tonight, and the, sorry, deputy chief of fire, I'm sorry, I'm very bad with names and proper titles. They, you could hear in their voices how it's affecting them, that they're talking about overtime and that equals safety. And in our town, we shouldn't be asking about safety, we shouldn't be asking about education. We should be funding these things. That is one of the things that I moved here a year ago, and I did my research on towns, and I chose Norton because you guys had good ratings and you seemed like a good town. So, I think that we need to keep what we have in this town, and we need to fund it. And it sounds like it's been an issue for a while, so I'm not a financial person, but you guys need to fix your budget to pay for the things that the town needs.
Peter, did you want to get up?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
Yes, yes.
Then you're next.
Here's the mayor. Peter Wiggins, you're on Ray Mayor in Norton. I agree with what Bill Guevara said. It is time we start thinking about our town, and let's think about it a little more, right? Because I lived in this town almost 38 years, and I'm a proud Nortonite, just like my mom and my dad, and it's time we think about this town and think about the community, and let's move our town forward. We want to be Norton, we, we want to be the best town that we ever had. Yeah.
Hi, Laura Gustafson, 9 Hallowan Drive. This will be super quick. I just want to piggyback on previous comments. We, prior to living here, we've been here for a decade. We lived in Attleboro, and when we wanted to move and get our, you know, big grown-up house, we definitely looked around everywhere, and we settled on Norton because we like, we like these schools, this will be great. And then, I'll scale back a little, so I also get to bring my child to my school, my daughter, she's a teacher in a different district. So, she was with me just because, sorry, couldn't do the JCS time. So, she just started in the district last year and loved it. We were like, this was great, this is perfect, this is everything that we wanted. And then, as we saw how things went. So, you know, my daughter is the fiery redhead that came and spoke at the school committee meeting when everything went down. Then we spoke at the following school committee, and, you know, we, we got involved too late. So, we were told to pay attention, so we're paying attention. So, here we are. And I don't, I don't want to have these conversations with my daughter up saying, all right, well, let's take a look and let's see what Southeastern has to offer. Okay, well, let's see, but you know what? We're having those conversations because I don't see an end in sight. Override, big scary word, override. I'm saying it, override, can everyone hear me? Override, okay? I live here, I've got to pay that too. I pay my taxes, I pay for my kids, I pay for their sports, I pay for their fees, I pay for everything. I am a school teacher, my husband is a school teacher, okay? Great. We look at those contracts, we have contract negotiations, we are talking about Coda, we are talking about all of these things. You are talking about suggestions of teachers, take a zero. You know what? It's up to you guys, you've got to save the day, you've got to get us out of this mess. Not fair, okay? I'm paying, I'm taxpayer, I'm doing all of that. Okay, override. Override should not be this big scary, oh, let's do this fear mongering of what an override is. You know what override is? If you look at an override and what you're actually going to be asking for, okay? If you're looking at your median house, you know, what it costs, okay? We'll go with a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost of a house, that's, that's what median is now, okay? Fine. Five hundred here, even better, but I'm going to go seven fifty, I'm going to go higher. If you're talking seven fifty, okay, then you are looking at a seven hundred and fifty dollar increase. Do you know what a seven hundred and fifty dollar increase is? Guess what? Let's cue that, you know, Sarah McLachlan music, it is literally two dollars a day. You can get your, you know, sacrifice your company's cup of coffee. And it doesn't even have to be your whole household. One member of your household, can you sacrifice that two dollar cup of coffee? Alternate between family members to sacrifice that two dollar cup of coffee. That's what an override is. That is what saves your overtime for your police officers. That's what saves your, you know, houses from burning completely to the ground, like unfortunately that one that happened on Shelley. Thank God that that happened on Shelley now and not back in December when we couldn't even get onto Shelley because a tree was down for twenty-four hours. That is with what we have now, okay? That's what an override gets you. An override keeps your teachers in those classrooms. That's what an override does, that's what that two dollars a day does. Dan, thank you.
A little balance. Inflation rate for 2022 is at eight, nine percent. Everybody here, yeah, you want an override, but you've got to realize that we're all getting hit with utilities, insurance, other taxes, you know, our pay rates aren't going up enough. And we didn't have a, we voted down an override in 2016. And my kids, my kids still did pretty good, going through all the schools, went up to UMass Emerson, and probably will get a job doing very well. What's the percentage of the kids going to college?
Four-year college?
Four-year college.
Accepted is close to eighty-three.
That's a, that's a pretty good number, so we're doing pretty-
Actually going is about sixty-eight.
Well, that's up to them on an individual basis, but that's, that's a pretty good number that they do get accepted. So, you've got everything going up and you're just asking for, all right, here's one more thing going up, you know? I don't, I, good luck to that. And, and, and-
Let him talk, okay?
Thank you. And you're going to say that, well, you don't have any kids in the school or something like that. I've given you a brand-new police station, a water treatment plant, I've improved the, the high school, we've given you a brand-new, well, back in the day, we've given you a middle school, we've given you now a new town hall, we've given you now a senior center, okay? I want to see some, you know, I've given you enough, okay? So, I just want to get some balance here, just not all one-sided here, okay? So, yeah. Mark Sweetie, fourteen Laurel Lane, thank you.
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? So, just where you're, you know, coming from and your stance, what, what do you, what do you recommend? How do we fix this?
What do I recommend?
Yeah, well, how do we fix this?
What was, what was the pay increase for the teachers? What was the protect, was it higher than three percent?
To be two point seven five.
And then, it's been two point five, it should not have been that high each year.
That's what I was going to say.
Now, that's, the twenty, it's a twenty, since nineteen, nineteen eighty-
So, how, so how we fix it, so how you, how we fix it, you're saying, is that our teachers are paid too much, is that, is that what you're saying?
What have the, what, the contract-wise, have they been, ever been higher than two percent or two and a half percent since nineteen eighty when two and a half went through?
Mark, we can't lie about that.
Look, I generally, no. I mean, like, in, in my time, I've, I've been on all of the negotiations for-
Fifteen years?
Fifteen years. And, and I'll tell you this right now, and there are some teachers in here, I don't know if there are any who have been on the thing with me, it's a cold day in hell when I give three percent.
That's all you got, that's all you can give? That's all you can give?
No, I don't give that. I, I usually, I mean, I think every year, I don't think I've ever been three percent. I might have been one year.
Just want a little balance, it's just not one-sided.
Yeah, so I guess I would ask, I would, my question to you would be, you, you talked about all the things that your taxes paid for and, you know, new schools and whatever. I guess I'm, I'm curious, what do you think living in a town is?
I've given you.
But that's what living in a town is. Living in a town is you-
I've given you everything.
You pay for the things that the town needs.
I've given you everything.
Okay? No.
I've given you everything. What's that?
How much was the town board's increase in salary?
We don't get paid.
The board, how much did they give me?
Zero.
All right. All right. You may have used the gap.
We're going to give zero.
That's zero.
Everybody, everybody, remember, we're going to be respectful of everyone. Mark, have you finished or do you have anything else you want to say before?
I've got more things to say, but-
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Let's try that scorched earth, he's always been talking about scorches. Let's go for a year for scorched earth. And if it's that bad, we come back next year.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. I would just, I would just point out, we are neither going to pass nor fail an override tonight, this is, we are not here to vote on an override. We're acting like we're here to debate that topic and we're, quite frankly, we're not. So, I, I think, if, if I remember your agenda correctly, the question is, do you want to put one on a ballot or not? So, the, so I'll answer that. So, the first item on the agenda, and we have to stick to the agenda, was a discussion of the budget. So, we haven't even gotten to the part about whether or not we're going to put an override on the ballot. Right, but we're not here to debate the override. There is, there is right now no override on any ballot, anything at all. It's simply a question of, what do we think of our budget right now? And our budget stinks, and that's where we're at, right? We don't have enough money. So, I, I mean, I think, I think we can keep the questions to budget questions and not the, I don't like an override or I do like an override. I, I don't know that that's productive right now. And there's, there's going to be time for that, I think, in the future, whether it's this year or next year. But at this point, battling about an override is, is counterproductive, quite frankly.
Dinesh, I think just the public is concerned and they're wondering what the options are to fix the problem that we're in.
No, I, I get that, and I get discussing like-
And it comes up because it's an option, right?
But I get discussing like the mechanics of it, et cetera, but to, to come forward and say, you know, I don't want one and I paid for this, whatever, this, this isn't the place for that. I mean, the, the decision they have to make ultimately is, do we put it before the citizens? Do we say, hey, we want the citizens to have the right to decide for themselves whether they want an override or not? That's, that's the decision being made tonight. Right, and, and so, everybody here knows the background of why we're here tonight. The decision to, about whether or not to put it on the ballot has to be made tonight because there's a deadline for getting it on the town ballot and that deadline is tomorrow. So, that's why this meeting was called for tonight because the select board has to make that vote tonight if we're going to, or not, put it on the town election ballot.
For the twenty-seventh?
For, for April twenty-seventh, that's correct. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I just wanted to clarify two things because I think I heard somebody say, what do we get paid? We are all volunteers. So, some of us have sat in these seats for fifteen, nine, eight, whatever, we don't, we don't get paid a dime.
I thought you just said fifty-nine. I thought you just said fifty-nine and I was like-
Fifteen, I like it.
You look very good for your age.
Thank you. So, we get paid nothing. We, we are sitting in these seats because we genuinely care about our town, we want to see our town thrive and get better year after year, so I just want to clarify that. The second thing is, the reason why I asked, Mark, is what, five what? Oh, I thought I misspoke. The reason why I asked that question is because we have gone this route of an override. I mean, some of us have been involved in these overrides, know that it's needed, but this town speaks loudly, no, we don't. So, what are our options? As the three boards, what are our options? What do we have? What do we do? Override is here, what's the other option? Cut drastically so we have less police and less fire, less teachers? Is that what this town wants? If it is, get ready, it's coming. It's coming because we have no other choice now. Why are we here? So, right, I mean, it just, I don't, I would just like to hear somebody tell me another way. What's the other way? If we don't want to increase taxes, what is the other way to get us where we need to be when, like Mr. Guevara said, this has been happening for decades? How do we get there? Who can answer that? Don't everybody speak at once.
All right, so, on the front row here and then, Rob.
I'll go after you.
Okay. Yep, yep.
Debbie Winston, seventy-seven Elm Street. Here's the problem. The override doesn't pass because the people need to trust that there's not sneakiness going on, that there's not underhandedness going on. It's that simple. We're in a digital age for the schools, we're in the digital age. Let's look at how many books, math doesn't change. There are other ways to cut other than cutting teachers. And the fear mongering, we don't buy it anymore.
Okay.
And those who say the town is not like our budget, it most certainly is. And is a point when we say enough is enough. We have a nice town, we have a great school, we have provided enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. So, we're, I mean, just, just, Rob, come on up.
Just want to address that right quickly. Jenna Christine, we have our entire budget online.
Yes.
If you access, so, any, anybody who wants to access the, the school budget, the entire budget is online.
But how long has it been online?
For years.
Yeah.
Years.
FY25 Budget, the book that all of the committee members have here, and it's a full, all the line items are there as well, it's right on our website, right on the page.
So, I, I've, I've said over the years, a couple times here and there, I invite anybody to go through the line items and correct our budget. It's, it's super easy to get up there and say, if we don't trust you, you're sneaky, you're sneaky. The problem is, is when you present someone like that with evidence to say, here's everything right here, show me the sneaky part, that's when the confirmation bias comes in, right? They say, well, I don't believe that. Okay, I can't, I can't help you, like, I can explain it to you, but I can't understand it for you. This is, this is it, this is the budget, this is what we have. It's not something sneaky, it's not something like, hey, hey, Sherry, put that five million under the, under the covers over there so nobody knows it's here. That's not happening, it's simply not happening.
That's not true, there is evidence of-
There's five million under the, okay, well, so, again, I can't, I can explain to you, I can't understand it for you. If, if you, if you want to believe-
I can see it pretty well, sir.
If you want to believe that there is sneakiness going on, there is nothing that will change your mind.
We know there is, there's evidence.
There is nothing.
Can you produce it? Please produce it.
Yeah, present it, I mean, I don't have to tell you, present the evidence.
Where?
What about what we did to the Paces?
All right, Rob, come on up.
Don't you go without getting started on the Paces, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, most of my-
Name and address.
Rob Welsh, South Worcester Street. Most of my points actually got covered, a guy right after me. First of all, I'm kind of carrying the thing, kind of on a level set. We are here just talking about whether or not an override goes on a ballot, not whether or not to have an override. So, the time to argue about whether or not we want to have the override would be in the coming weeks after this meeting, maybe not, right?
Well, well, ultimately, what, what would happen, there's two options really where that could happen. One is, it's put, it's voted on tonight by the select board and the select board votes to put it on the April twenty-seventh town election ballot. If that, if the select board does not vote to put it on to that, to that ballot, it can, the override can be brought up at town meeting as part of the budget discussion. So, you can, you can do it one of two ways. Then, if it passes, if the override passes at town meeting, then there would be a special election for, because it has to be passed on in a ballot vote, ultimately.
But ultimately, you're voting just whether to go forward with it tonight and-
Correct.
And then whether to do it in a later day.
Correct, you got it.
Yeah.
Yep.
But this is not uncommon for us to do when we, because we do joint meetings regularly and we talk about the budget, so it's not uncommon for the three boards, when we finally get face-to-face, to have these conversations about the budget. I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
No, I understand that.
Okay, we're trying to strike sort of a delicate balance here, right? We want everybody to be heard. And tonight was the opportunity for people to come and be heard, it's the last opportunity before we vote on whether or not to put it on the ballot. So, yes, I agree with folks who are saying, well, we're not really here to talk about an override, but it's really hard to talk about the budget without talking about an override. And also, we want to give you folks a chance to be heard on the issue. It also may affect one of the select board members' vote, frankly, whether or not to put it on the ballot. I don't know that for sure, but it could be, so.
No, and I, I agree with that. This meeting's actually been really informative. You've actually, and I know you guys have read some of my shit, so I've been kind of complaining.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I've been praising you.
Wouldn't know.
But, no, and we've been complaining about lack of information. This meeting has been terrific. And, you know, I'm in that group of people that I could possibly vote yes for an override. I'm not up for cutting programs and things like that. I wanted to start seeing the why, why do we need the override, seeing the budgets, and that's why I was asking for it. It's not like, oh, we're going to dig in and find out where somebody was a cop or anything, I just, I want to understand what I'm voting for and why. And if I'm looking at things that say, Jesus, this is what it costs to educate a kid now at that level, you know, you've got to make a hard call, versus if we were looking at it otherwise. So, I found it intriguing, you said the detail was online, I did not know that. And there's been a number of us saying, we'd love to all look through that. So, if we could get those links like out, you know, that information getting out.
Website?
Rob, yes, I got extra copy.
And in the meantime, just, you know, I, I'm going to say, I think you should put it on, on the ballot and we should get information out there, things like that. It's good if we all know the budget, because if we're all looking at that and saying we should, you know, gee, this is the case, then there we go. You've asked really good questions, this is what I was praising you for. And these answers to the things she did, I think should be put out. And then, if you all saw the post where I did, oh, sorry, you're loving this, aren't you? Maybe you weren't Denise asking, but I thought were very good questions.
Oh, wonderful. I'm praising her for it.
I also included one of you, Kevin, because you were asking questions. Now, your questions were questioning, you know, the override and the budgets. Kevin, what you were asking for was information supporting, you know, it was more like, what do we lose if we don't vote for this? And I know you're trying to support the override, but that information should get disseminated too. And we're all for putting it on, we're getting the information out there and we make a informed thing. So, a lot of my frustration up to now has been feeling like starved for information, I'm being told, vote for this, and someone says so, and then it gets tough. So, share lots of information and then, by all means, put it up and vote on it.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate it. So, we got a couple of members of the thing come who wanted to make comments.
Oh, yeah.
She was, and she wins the most.
Okay, all right. All right, come on up, come on up. Bill and Cody, I know you guys are waiting to, to speak, we'll get to you in a second, okay?
Hi, my name's Amy Weber, I am not a resident of Norton, but I am a Norton teacher
I am not a resident of Norton, but I am a Norton teacher, and I'm also a vice president, one of the vice presidents for the Norton Teachers Association. And I am here to speak on behalf of teachers, but really, I'm here to speak on behalf of our kids, because really, we all know that children are the future of Norton. And they really deserve a right to a high-quality education, which we do our very best to give. But we need more, and we need smaller class sizes, as well as more, better curriculum support, and the opportunities that we could possibly be losing that will help them grow as people. It will be the students first and foremost who will feel the impact of these budget cuts. And if we're talking about elementary cuts, I really believe, as an elementary teacher, I teach third grade, I've taught Norton for 16 years, they will have long-lasting impacts that will carry throughout their entire educational career. Class sizes is something to me that's really crucial as an elementary student. Kids today, it's not like when a lot of you were in school, and everybody just sat in a row and listened. And the teachers are expected to have a real bag of tricks, and it's really hard to meet the needs of all your students when you have, I have 25 this year. It's really hard to meet all their needs, and I take it to my own heart when I feel like I'm not. And it's not my fault. It's not anyone's fault. It's just that there's 25 of them, and I can't imagine if it gets bigger. So I just am here to say, on behalf of our association, that the town is a responsibility to our children, whatever we can do to properly fund the schools, because that's truly investing in Norton's future.
All right. Mr. Rotandi, you wanted to, you had your hand up.
How you doing tonight? Just a quick comment, and, and it goes back to what Bill Gavilla said. You know, essentially, this is a, a political campaign. And my personal view is, we haven't, we haven't started the groundwork yet to be successful if we define successful as getting an override. I think if we define successful as defeating it, then you'll put it on the ballot. I don't think we're ready. I think we need, we need to do more groundwork to really try to convince the other side that, yep, the budget is this bad, yep, if we stick to it, we're going to have these cuts, yep, this is what you voted for. But to put it on today, or to vote for it today, I think it's just going to go down, it's going to fail, and we're going to be that much further behind, because we're not going to want to repeat the process right away. So I would be very hesitant to vote it in tonight. Thanks.
Okay. All right, thanks, Bill. Cody?
I'd like to thank Mr. Swinging for making some excellent points on what a great town Norton has been historically, and what a good job, in particular with respect to the schools, how great results they have produced. It is one of the key things that we considered whenever we moved to Norton five years ago. It is a key consideration of anyone who's looking to move to Norton that has school-age kids. And I think it would be a mistake to eliminate level services funding and go in the opposite direction of the success that Norton has had. 86% acceptance rate. You cut schools, you cut programs, that's going to go in the opposite direction. You cut that elementary-age programs, it's going to be a lagging indicator. But if you're starting at, you know, kindergarten through third grade, you're going to start seeing those results come, you know, nine years down the road. So I just appreciate the big note, the recognition there that Norton has done things very well, and that the budget hasn't always been what we would like it to be, to be able to provide more and more things. And, but to go in the opposite direction, the trusted board members of the school committee and select board, and the finance committee over the past 20 some odd years that produced those results, and giving the guidance to the town to be able to fund the schools without them, to say, "Now, they'll trust you. We think that you're lying. You don't need the money you're telling us you need to stay at the level of service that we're at." I think it's a mistake. So, and to Bill's point, or, you know, whether or not we are in a position to have an educated discussion about whether or not an override is needed, I think it's pretty clear an override is needed, but how much, this specific amount is needed, and to be able to educate people. You know, I'm closer to it, because I'm on the finance committee. We, the people on the boards and the committees that are sitting here talking about it, I'm closer to it, but the general public generally doesn't pay attention to these things, looking at it, hearing this for the first time tonight. You know, we've got ninety some odd people on the, on the call at one point, plus all the people in the room. If every meeting of ours looked like this, I think we'd be in a position of passing override tomorrow. Unfortunately, we don't, and we haven't, and so we do need the time to have that discussion. And, you know, we've got to leave it up to the elected officials at this point, whether or not they can put it on the ballot for further discussion, or what the town means.
All right, thanks, Cody. I think we've officially moved to the next item on the agenda, but we can definitely get some more comments from the, from the crowd.
I'm going to take the mask down, Stephen, here. I don't have COVID. I just have an old grandmother. My name is Val Cabral. I live at 50 Mansfield Ave. I'm on the Norton Cultural Council, so I see how many things are needed for programs to run in the schools and the library and so on. And I am going to argue about the override, so I'm sorry. I feel that a little bit of an introduction is necessary, because not everybody knows me. A lot of people seem to think that I'm from the outside here. And while I moved here in October 2020, I've lived four places in my entire life. West Bridgewater through my entire childhood, and the house my father still lives in, 15 minutes down the road. Norton for college, with a brief stint in Sharon for a few months while I was off campus, and a decade in Mansfield before I was here. That's it. I've never lived anywhere that's larger than here, except for Mansfield. I say this because it feels like sometimes people think that my beliefs in particular are a big city rather than small town, and they aren't. When you say Norton's a small town, it kind of makes me laugh, because you guys have multiple elementary schools and a separate middle and high school, which frankly seems like crazy to me. It's not a city, but I had three schools total, first through third, fourth through sixth, seventh through 12th. I graduated the class of 60 people. The whole school at the time had 420. My hometown is still half our population. So, yeah, we're small, but if you grew up here, I'm actually smaller town than you. I'm not coming at this from some city perspective. Into the meat of this, my home is twice the median value in town, which is not $750,000, so please don't think that I'm saying that. I don't have kids. I'm not at this time intending to have kids, with a caveat that might foster or adopt someday. But I'm still happy to pay higher taxes to support the kids in town, even though I don't have any, because I see the value in educating children. I was happy to pay higher taxes back, and we voted on the debt exclusion, because I think that the folks who serve our town deserve a decent place to spend the majority of their waking hours, and the seniors in town deserve resources and not to have to have financial conversations with a door that's unable to be shut if they're in a wheelchair. And I think the kids in town deserve to not have to worry about other towns refusing to play them in sports, because the fields are dangerous. This is what being a community means, caring about everyone who lives here and not just yourself. And that does include caring about the folks who feel a real burden from a tax increase. But when we are one of very few towns in the cotton vault that have never passed one, Whitman did. Okay, Whitman, which is like known for being elderly folks, they have around the same percentage of retirees, and West Bridgewater, my very fiscally conservative hometown, has also passed one. The argument that some people might not be able to afford an override falls a little bit flat, when we are such an outlier. That argument has been used over and over as the schools lost resources, a middle school librarian, language instruction for grades younger than a grade, when your brain is the best able to learn languages, all these bus fees and sports fees. Those things are things that were already lost and have already happened. Never mind the new cuts. And every time an override doesn't happen, the next time, there will be a new class of folks with fixed incomes who might have a harder time handling a tax increase. Plenty of the people who are mad about this are not those people. There seems to be a contingent of folks who say, and maybe not all here, some here, but a lot online, that there's waste in the budget, or money's being spent on indoctrination, or there's somehow a way that the schools, despite the aforementioned cuts and plenty more that I don't know about, can further tighten their belts. There are concerns about the other budgets. I'm sorry, I timed it at four minutes. I'll go really fast. That's why it might be wasteful, but I think every time we ask for those details, I can see those details. I reviewed the budgets from the other town meetings I've been to. I have yet to see the waste proven out. I don't see anything that looks egregious myself. If there is a secret conspiracy to waste town money, I obviously want to know about, but that's not what it looks like. And if you make accusations like that, the onus is on you to prove that someone is wasting money. We have the presumption of innocence in the United States, whether we like it or not. All right? Finally, the, yes, okay, sorry. I'm really loud. I just am. What all this looks like to me a lot of the time is that, frankly, a lot of the folks who are fighting this are well off as me, if you look at property value, some of them. I do not think that if we are in a town where we have people with their names on streets arguing against this, and they want us to believe that the best we can do is cut upwards of 40 positions across the school system, and continue foregoing needed repairs to the schools, like the middle school that you cannot do a show in without lighting lights separately. Norton Singers, which I'm part of, we paid $500,000, I think, the last show we did, because the lights in that auditorium do not work. I don't think that any of that says that this town is fiscally irresponsible, and I don't think new taxes can continue to be an anathema to us. I think we have to put the kids and the seniors and everyone else in town first. We have funding that we can help folks who find these tax increases to be difficult. I will gladly, and I'm saying this, and you can hold me to it, I will pay other people's tax increases. If $750 is a killer for you, if you're in a home that's $300 million, and, sorry, $300,000, it's a $300 increase, I will pay you a $300 increase a year. I'm not joking about that. I can't fix it myself, but if there are people who are really struggling with an increase, I'm happy to help with it where I can. I have donated funds to try to help with that. But we can't keep pretending that because some folks might struggle with a tax increase, it's something that we can't ever consider when our kids are suffering, have been suffering, and will suffer more.
I want to know where I can put my name on her list. Send me a message.
You guys get together right after work.
I called you last, and you asked me what I'm donating.
We, we all know you were last. We get it.
I don't think, I don't think anyone has anybody who hasn't spoken yet, so Amy, did you want to say one more thing?
Thank you. Just one more question, Amy Martin. So here and now, can we just talk, tell the town what the process would be for putting it on the ballot, or putting it on the ballot? And then, I do want to say, as far as those who cannot afford it, there are an inordinate amount of resources at the senior center. Contact Beth Rossi. Contact the senior center. Anybody can get help. Oil, senior tax rebates, their resources are there. Just seek them out. I promise you, she is a wealth of information. The senior center is a wealth of information. If you do need help funding, anything for your family, there are so many resources in town. St. Vincent de Paul, Beth Rossi, reach out. There, we're, so many of us are there to help you if you do have a problem when the override hopefully is passed, or if not. But if you need help, even without the override, if you need help in town, there are resources. Please use them. Just to clarify, that's not just for seniors? Correct. Oh, no, the senior tax break, yeah, but seniors, everybody, yes. Anybody, you're right. Thank you for clarifying. Yes, anybody in town, reach out to those services. There's so many people in town that want to help you. Anybody.
Okay, thanks, Amy. All right, so, was there one more?
Matt Drane, 6 North Washington Street. So, I mean, a lot of others have already spoken a lot about, you know, the need for the override or more funding. I just wanted to ask, you know, one of the items on the agenda, it's kind of a segue to what is the next item on the agenda, is whether to put this on the ballot for April. And I would just like to ask the question, you know, do we have enough information at this point tonight to know what that correct number would be? If we really truly do, then we should do it. But if we, if we don't, then I would encourage us to wait until town meeting, to put forward, you know, two budgets and, and do that approach. Because, you know, we want to get the number right. We want to be as close as possible. We want to be able to have a defensible budget to the town that everybody can know is our best effort. I certainly wouldn't want to see us, you know, rush it tonight to potentially have, you know, the wrong number in mind that would then not go on the ballot. So that's really my main question for tonight, is whether we know that, and if we do, we would go forward, but if not, you know, I would encourage everybody to support, you know, an override effort at town meeting and pursue it in that direction.
All right, thanks, Matt.
So if I could just, go ahead, Mike, and just correct me if I'm wrong. Mike, you said these are the, the final numbers that you're going to present. So this is, this is what we would be potentially voting on. So these will be the numbers. It wouldn't change, it wouldn't?
Well, it all depends. What, if we went with a 3% budget?
Right.
Those would be the.
Yeah, I'm saying within the options you provide, okay.
I think it's a fair question to ask, like, if we're talking about an override, what are we talking about for the amount of people, right? So I'll turn that over to, to you folks.
To us, folks?
You did one of these, you call it.
Well, the thing is, if, if you're going to do an override, say, say it was, we're going with the 3% budget. If you're going to use that, you can't do an override for the exact amount, because next year, you're going to compound that, obviously, because you're going to have increases in utility costs, you're going to have salary increases. So it could go up another two and a half to 3% the next year. So you got to go higher than the one point, whatever we need. You'd have to go higher than that. So you'd have to go to at least 3 million, and then we'd have to be conservative in how we do move forward, so we'll have a cushion as we go along in years to come. And just because you pass a 3 or a $4 million override, that doesn't mean that we have to spend to that level. It's still up to town meeting to approve budgets. You always have that, and, but you don't have to spend up to it. You can stay under the levy limit. It all depends on what town meeting approves for a budget.
And just a procedural question, that the select board is voting tonight on whether or not to put it on the town election ballot. Do we have to arrive at a number tonight for that ballot question?
You will have to arrive at a number tonight, unfortunately.
So if I can ask a question, I know, I'm sorry to interrupt, Steve. If, if we go the opposite route, so to speak, and, or if it's a negative vote by the select board, as is their potential, what's the process for someone to bring this up on the floor of town meeting to say, "We can pass the two budgets there," and then we obviously have to go to a special election after? So how, like, how would a town person do that, I guess, or someone?
Do you want to say something?
Well, I was going to say, the townspeople wouldn't have to do that. I think the town manager would present the two budgets at town meeting.
We could work on what we want to present as a level services budget, or the budget that we can afford without an override, and then an override budget. And town meeting would vote, and if the override failed on the ballot, then we'd go back to the other budget. So what would have to happen is, at town meeting, if that override budget does get approved, this select board could meet that night and vote to put the ballot on the question. It would go to the town clerk right then, and she could schedule an election within, like, 35 days after town meeting.
That would be how much of additional cost to town with a special election, give or take?
It's.
The last time she said it was about eight grand, eight to 10,000. I had a, just, got another question, Mike. You had mentioned that we want to, if we, if we do decide to do this, to go over what's needed, because down the road, you know, next year, the year after. A lot of questions I'm getting from, from residents are, you know, what's to say that's not going to be needed in four years? So what's going to be done to prevent this from having to be an issue in four years if it goes through and passes?
He just.
And that's to echo everybody.
I mean, who knows if, in four years, none of us may even be sitting in this room.
I hope so.
So, I mean, we can obviously say, "We're committed to being conservative and staying, you know, so we, that doesn't happen," but.
That's also been the argument against the override, is that.
I think.
Not staying with it. So I'm just, I'm passing on questions.
Yeah, and just a couple of things on that. Like, I think, you know, you know, ultimately, you know, that it's an, it's an unanswer, it's unanswerable, right? Like, you don't know what's going to happen between them. Who knew that COVID was going to happen or whatever? So I get that part of it. But I also think it ultimately, it falls on the town. The budget is set by town meeting. It is not set. It's recommended from the FinCom, and it is set by town meeting. So we only have ourselves to blame if we don't pass a budget that we think is conservative or meets the needs of the town departments that need it. So, you know, I know that's a hard thing to hear, but it's the truth. We don't vote on the budget. We, the town meeting, the people in the town vote on the budget. And then the other thing I would just want to mention is that, I'm not a mathematician by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, we tried to do an override in 2008, to that, for fiscal year 2018. If we had passed that override at the time, you know, the numbers that I have says we'd have about $4.5 million more dollars right now in our budget. That's total back of the napkin math. If somebody wants to challenge it, or sit down with me and go over it, but if you just take the amount that we asked for in 2018, and you just compound it by 2.5% every year, take the amount that we asked for in 2018 and you just compound it by 2.5% every year, you'd have another $4.5 million or $4 million in our budget right now. So we wouldn't be in this position that we're in right now if we had passed the override in 2018. So it's just something to think about. I think right now, we want to discuss, we have one more comment from the audience? Yeah. Is that a line over there?
Yeah. Formally.
Yeah, go ahead.
Donna Dolak, I live at 104 Newcombe Street. I am a parent and a parent professional at the Yell. I have two children who are nine school grades apart, and I can personally attest to the fact that my oldest has had opportunities and resources available to her that my youngest, who's in sixth grade, has not had and will not have if these cuts are made. I think that every single person sitting up here should be supporting, putting an override on the ballot this year because enough cuts have been made. We cannot let the kids have, we cannot hurt the kids anymore. It's time that we all, as a town, came together and passed an override. And if you don't support that, I think you need to be explaining to the public why it's better to just make draconian cuts. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Donna. Anyone else in the line over there? Come on up.
Orin Coe, 28 Cotter Road. I didn't want to mimic what Bill had said. I had the same thought about insanity. I've been watching this town, I've been here for 18 years, and every year, it's almost like the same question comes up, and the same thing happens. One of the things that I just want to be clear about, I've heard everybody talking about this as a political campaign. It's not. It's an informational and educational campaign. One of the things that happens every year, it gets thrown out, you hear the worst of everything from everybody. There's no organized attempt to let people know what's involved, why it's involved, how it's going to affect them, when it's going to affect them. And the other part of it is, it's the other side too. You talk about the elderly people. There's no programs out there letting them know that there is help. There's things such as the Circuit Breaker Act, which came into effect. There's a senior work program. And it's that part of the education program as well. It's not just telling them, we need this because and we want it. It's saying, there's some help for you if you really need help. And that's part of the program. That was the one thing I wanted to caution. I don't want to see this as a political campaign. I want to see it as an educational and informational campaign, because that's critical to making it successful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ari.
All right, I wanted to thank you for saying that, because that's something I was actually going to bring up, that, you know, a few people did say this is a political campaign. And I can speak for myself, and a lot of the board members that I do know, I don't make any decisions by political influence. I base it on what I think is right for the town. So I don't think anybody here makes their decisions based on anything political. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Sorry. Come on up, point your line, and then you'll be next, okay?
Hi, I'm Olivia Gustafson. I'm in 7th grade in Norton School. And last year, when we made budget cuts, we lost chorus, and we all fought really hard to get that back. Luckily, that did come back, but we still lost languages. I have not had languages this year, and I feel like if we didn't have this override, I probably won't have them next year. I am already behind in that because I just won't have them. And I feel like if I don't have languages, or let's say, bands got cut and all these things got cut, what's, like, the point of me staying here? Like, I could honestly go to, like, Mansfield and stuff like that. I feel like I would need, if I don't have these things, like, I'm already behind, because I already haven't had a language this year. So I feel like if we waited on the override, then what's to say we don't wait next year? And I just feel like if I've already lost this, I mean, like, I've already missed out on that, and I don't want to miss out on it next year and miss out on all these opportunities that I could be having. So, thank you.
Thanks, Olivia.
Kim Arena, 8 Fordham Drive. I think what Sherry was saying, gone. You know, I think that maybe we approach this as, what do we do? How do we fix this? You know, we've been kicking the can, like Bill said, I've been here 28 years now, my kids both went through the school systems, and we just keep putting it off. So, okay, some people say no to override, some people say yes to override. What other options are there? And if we approach this at town meeting, or on a ballot, or whatever, as how do we fix this? Let's not talk about what's wrong, what's right, what we're going to lose, but how do we fix this? And try to get everybody focused on that. And from that, we might get new ideas, or we might get the support for something else. So that's just my opinion.
Thanks, Kim. Yeah, go ahead.
James reminded me, when you do the override, you also have to add in that $1 million we were using in free cash, because we want to get to the point where we don't use free cash for the budget. And ideally, you have the free cash that's available for one-time expenses. And think about people that have come before the select board about drainage issues, you know, different things that come up, and we don't have money. If we're using all our free cash for budgets, we don't have money to take care of anything else. And so people, you know, you may need a dam repair, you may need some work on drainage. So, well, we end up going out and borrowing for some of these things that we're wasting money on interest if we could have our free cash available for that stuff.
Thanks, Kim.
All right, yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Just to follow up on that, and it goes back to what you were asking, Steve, like, there would be work involved, right? It's not just pick a number, right? We have to sit down, look at what the budgets are, look what's a realistic number for level services, or, you know, what needs to be put in the budget, and keeping, you know, a conservative number in mind as well, but, you know, it's that balance, right? So I think anyone that's expecting us to just pick a number is not, that's not how it's going to happen.
Nick, go ahead.
I mean, I agree with you to a point, but if we're trusting our departments, and we're not fluffing anything and adding anything additional, we have a pretty easy number sitting right in front of our faces of 5.5 million. That's what it is to get level services. That's what it's going to take police to keep overtime, to keep schools funded, to have level services, so on and so forth, right?
What's that $1 million?
Plus, so there's 6.5, right?
That's, you know...
This year.
This year, 6.5. So if we're looking at, without any cuts that FinCom can recommend, blah, 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 you're looking at a $6.5 million, again, I can argue semantics, but 6.5 million override.
Somewhere between $3 million and 6.5. It's like you're holding a ball. Being conservative, then it may not be in the best interest to go full 6.5. I don't mean, that's a true burden. So, I mean, if that number is 3 million, then that's a conservative number, like we just discussed 20 minutes ago. To go full, you know, full-scale 6.5 maybe isn't the best way to handle it. I mean, you know, we've talked back and forth all night. We don't know what our future holds. We don't know what the numbers look like. You know, Dinesh likes to say, that's the math is the math, and the math is not our friend. You know, so, and that's the bottom line when it comes to this. So, I mean, you know, is 6.5, that's a tough, tough point to make.
Well, I think we're the 6.5, though. You can't sit here and say, this is what we need to do level services, to the residents of Norton, and then turn around and say, well, we can actually cut a little bit more fat. That's exactly what some people have discussed. Not to mention, when we did it, when we tried to do an override in '16 and '17, what did we tell all the residents? We were going to open Charlie, the school's going to be more funded, you're going to get X, Y, and Z, you're going to get all these different things, you're going to get a full-time parking rector, right? We all, we sat here and told the town, if you pass this override, you are going to get all these additional things. Now, we're going to go back, say, hey, we need 6.5 million, and you're getting nothing. You're getting level services. Maybe, maybe we're going to go real conservative, we're going to cut it down to a $3 million override instead. And now, we're still taking a $3.5 million cut. So when it comes back to us, you're looking at it from a standpoint of, like, even with an override, we're not doing anything additional. We're putting, with a $3 million override, what we're doing is, and I've said this to the school committee, we're putting a Band-Aid on the amp, you know. Why are we going to go 3 million? Get what we need. If we need a 6.5 million override, put a 6.5 million override in the budget. What are we waiting for?
So if I can add on to, Mr. Chair, on to the next point, yeah, I was just looking to make sure that that 12% increase that was for level services would be part of that 6.5. So anything under that, exactly to your point, there's going to be cuts anyways.
So are you both supporting a 6.5 million override?
If you want me to motion for it, I will.
Well, we have got...
I didn't say I was supporting it, I said I want to motion for it.
Historically, at these overrides, we haven't given the voters what we said we would be giving back that, because the money wasn't there. You know, we've had a grant to open Charlie, and thank God, because I live on that side of town, and I know about Response Science and things like that, you know, and we still don't have a full-time parking rector 12 years later. You know, so we're still, you know, we're still asking for more money. We're asking to just now call it a bill. We're asking it.
You're digging the hole, we've dug the hole deeper.
Yeah.
Right?
That's a great word, a bill. That's a perfect word.
But when it comes to it, it's on the backs of the taxpayers.
Absolutely, yeah. Go ahead.
Chairman, and listen to everybody here tonight, listen to everybody on all sides. You're not ready for an override. This town is not ready for an override. We don't even have our numbers together. It's 3 million, it's 6 million, it's 9 million. As Mr. Rotandi brought up Monday night at the FinCom meeting, we need a five-year plan. Put a five-year budget cycle and say, okay, this is what we're going to need next year, that's what we're going to need the following year, that's what we need the following year. Without that, this is just another Band-Aid, and next year, we'll be sitting at the table again, whether it passes or not. There is no numbers. Without a plan, you have no numbers. You just want to throw a die at the board and say, okay, 6 million, 5 million, what's your number? What's your number? What's your number? Just get a lottery machine, just pick a number. When you have a plan, that you can present to the taxpayers and say, this is what we need year one, year two, year three, that's when you go to the taxpayer, if you want to be successful. If not, I think you're wasting your time. Just my opinion.
Yep, come on up.
I would second what Zach said and what Bill Rotandi said. I'm really concerned tonight, we're just not ready. We just sit here and joke it or not, let's add a million, we just found out about that tonight. Are you ready to take a $6.5 million override? Yeah, why not? Let's do it. This is serious. So we're really serious about it, let's sit down, do the due diligence, so we can do its best in the town, not just one year, let's go future. And I don't think we're ready. I'll second and echo, but we're not ready.
Thanks. Thank you.
So we actually do have our numbers.
Go ahead, Denise.
We actually do have our numbers. This is not a, you know, casual exercise for us. We would actually run through our numbers. You guys want to?
Yeah, so we've spent a lot of time, our number has been pretty consistent for the school department. We knew what level services were going to be back in November. Our number has been consistent throughout the course of this budget process. Christine and I have done some work taking a look at what level services would be, but also, as Zach said, looking towards the future of what Norton Public Schools really needs. One of the things that we put forward this year for the first time ever was information on our unfunded requests. So things that came from the principals and from our department heads around what we really could use for this coming school year. And so thinking about those positions, thinking about what level services is, and also thinking, to Nick's point, about actually giving back something to the community in terms of, you know, taking out transportation fees. I know Chief Clark would be thrilled if more students were riding the bus to and from school, would really help some of our traffic issues. Also, taking a look at our athletic fees and being able to bring some of those down as well. And we think our number is between 5 and 5.2 million.
Can I just, I just want to respond to the gentleman from FinCom. We didn't just take a number and throw it out there, and I know it sounded like we were kind of, there's no joke about this, there's a hard number here, a $5.583,000. And the additional million was what James had said for free cash. So we didn't just pick that number out of the hat.
That's fine, thank you for that. I don't think we should be talking about these numbers the night of the day.
So Zach, to your point, you know, taking those numbers and adding the 2.5% year over year?
Can you keep your costs at 2.5% year over year?
We would have to. I mean, right, we would have to.
You've got to so far.
But we wouldn't, that's the issue. We wouldn't do that, because we know how much the teachers, and how much we need to keep them. So we have to pay them 3%, 3.5%. We have to up the things. We have to give them their step raises per the union. We cannot keep, we cannot keep anything at 2.5%. So we're going to run into this issue again, just like a lot of towns who have done this. They've done multiple overrides. We will be back at this table, with or without an override, within five years, guaranteed. That's how it works. That is the cost. That is the cost of doing this. But right now, you don't even have a five-year plan. Correct? You know, you need a five-year plan. The plan right now is, let's throw a Band-Aid on it to get past another year. I think that's a wrong approach. I could be wrong. As, you know, as a businessperson, that's not how you run budgets. You have a plan, and you say, okay, this is what we're going to need, year 1, 2, 3, 4, and you put a plan in front of the taxpayers and say, this is what we're going to do. I don't think this is going to, townwide, schoolwide, you know what the contracts are with the various employees. I don't know how far out they go, but...
So one of the biggest challenges we have in the school department is predicting costs when it comes to educating our students, right? So as students are born, they come, they enroll in our schools, the demographics of our community shift, the changing needs of our students shift, and some of the things that we don't have control over are special education costs over and above what we're able to offer and provide here in Norton. So last year, the private special education schools across the state had a level 14% increase that was approved by the state, by OpEd, and that's something that we have zero control over. This year, it's 6%. So when you take a look at those placements and that cost, it's 20% increase over two years. And that's something that we can't predict, and we can't do anything about. Additionally, transportation costs, those have been really excessive over the last few years. So while we definitely have control over contracts, the upcoming school year will be a contract negotiations year for us with the majority of our unions. We can keep all of those things, we can predict those things, and there are just certain things that we just cannot predict.
But again, even on that, I would argue that every year, as a town, we should say, okay, we're going to put $1 million every year as budgeted into the stabilization account for things that we know are going to come up, things that you can't predict. It snows 20 feet this year, you know, we can't predict that. We have a buffer, we're not going to cut it to the Y. But right now, we have nothing. We have, this is what we need to get by next year, that's what we think, and let's just get, I just, I just think, and it's personally my opinion, it's my opinion, if you put this out there the way it is, it is dead on arrival. That's just my opinion.
Zach, if I can counter that point, where's that money we get for stabilization in the next three or five years? We have a problem predicting this year's numbers if we do a budget in two months, three months' time. So every year, we get later and later to what we predict our budget is going to be, and that is largely a prediction. So to say we can take $1 million and put it into stabilization, we don't have $1 million to put into stabilization now.
I said, as part of an override, we can budget that in this part of the year. So if you need, if your next five-year plan says you need $20 million, you say, okay, I'm going to put $21 million, and I'm going to put a million away. Not to mention, we just had a COVID situation, where we've relied on, we all get drunk on federal money that we used for everything, and now that's gone, and hopefully, we don't have that again, and we get, have some stability. There has to be some stability, and there has to be some cost controls. I mean, you just can't, if you're going to come back with 10%, 12% budgets, no matter what you do, it's going to be blown up. I mean, there has to be, we've got to agree within some reason, pick a number, 3%, 4%, 5%, that's the money we have. That's all we're going to negotiate, contracts with town employees, teachers, whatever, I mean, firefighters. It's just a budgeting process. You can have something instead of what we have now, which is, everybody just, you know, let's just get by the next year.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Zach.
Kevin?
Yep, come on up. Yeah, and then Denise.
My name's Curtis Buck, I live at 51 West Hodges. I've been listening to the conversation tonight, and it seemed like it's a game of semantics. Oh, we want to, 2%, 2%, 2.5%, 2.5%. Why don't we just say, we have a budget that needs to be passed. We have expenses, we have all kinds of things happening in town that need to be covered with, unfortunately, taxpayers' money. Nobody wants their pocket picked. Everybody wants to contribute fairly. We don't expect a free ride, we expect to pay our fair share. So why don't you come up with a budget that you all can accept, have no desires or wants, have necessities and needs presented to the people? Leave this, leave 2.5 out. That's kind of a moot point. kind of a moot point. We need the money. We have to have the money to run the town for the expenses that occur. To me, it's pretty simple.
Thank you. All right, Denise, you can finally go.
So I just wanna say that I, although I'm not opposed to an override in general, I think rushing it tonight would be a huge mistake. Me, as a board, just got this detail tonight. And to, to Zach and Steve's point, we need to see this look like overtime. We know what our contractual rates are. Why can't we put that into this same table and see what it's gonna look like over the next five-year period to make sure that we are selecting the correct amount for an override when we do think about doing override? So we need to kind of, and also looking at the tax rate over that five-year period as well, because we have debt exclusion coming off, coming on, whatever. So let's look at that over the five-year period as well. We need more information. And to someone's point about what's matter of success, matter of success is educating the people so they can make the right decision for them. We've not done that yet, right? We've just these numbers today. We should be sharing this information with the public. We should be sharing the tax rate information with the public. As much information as we can give them, we should be giving them so they can make educated decisions. Otherwise, we're just, they're just taking our word for it, and that's where the distrust issue comes from.
Great. So Bill, and then Debbie.
Somebody back here.
Just one point. When I was talking about, this is a political issue. Nick was absolutely right in what he said about, you know, put the number four up. That makes all the sense in the world. It's the most logical thing. It's far and away what you do. And you can't, because this is a political thing. It doesn't matter if you're putting forth a good number. It matters if you look like you're putting forth a good number. Because if the public doesn't believe you, that you're putting forth that good number, then all the work you have done is wasted. And that's what I mean by politics. I know that's, everybody gets all upset and that's, but that's what this is. And there's nothing wrong with politics. Politics is the business of running government, and that's what everybody does every day. It's the bad politics that we don't wanna get into. But this isn't override. It's a sensitive issue. It's a, it's the most emotional issue. You can tell, because when you put a selectmen's raise or a select board member's raise or a school committee raise on the ballot, we get 500 people. Put an override on, we get 5,000 people. So, you know, I mean, tell me what draws them. You know, it wasn't me when I ran. I can tell you that. And it's that. So you have to go through it. You have to look at it. You have to have every single thing. Because I guarantee you, there'll be people who are watching this tonight, or maybe who even are here tonight, that later on will be going, they just picked that number out of the hat. They rushed it. They didn't, you know, they didn't do this. So that's why you have to do it. Nick, you're absolutely right. And that's the way it should be. But it can't be.
All right, Debbie, and then Denise.
Bill on.
And then Bill, sorry. Sorry, Bill.
What he said about information. The wisest thing I heard is what you said the whole night. It's a budget. I've been here. I hear how it's a deficit. This is my ignorance. I don't know. So I'm asking, what does the town manager do? We have all the boards. I'm grateful for all of you who volunteer. I'm in the education field myself, okay? And I care deeply and passionately about those children. But we need fiscal responsibility. It's we, the people, that get to decide. And I know we have a lot of volunteers and whatnot, but as a town manager, we need somebody strong. You did say the word conservative. That gives me a little faith. We need conservative, and we need a plan. We need to have faith.
Okay, thanks Debbie.
The only last point that I wanted to add to my thing is I know that there's some concern about a special election later on because this cost associated with it. But if there's one task that's the most important task for all three of you boards that are sitting here, it is proper budget. And so if there's anything that's worthwhile for extra cost, this would be it.
Fair enough. All right, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, you know, anybody who's been on the FinCom for five, six, seven years has heard me say, for five, six, seven years, we need projections. We need the information. Ever since I was chairman, I've been asking for this information. You need the information not just for the year we're looking at, but two to three, four. That way, you have an educated ability to say, this is where we are today. With these changes, this is where we'll be. And that's how you educate the people as to whether they can decide override yes, override no. But to end, to the person, it might have been Bill Gabea, I forget, who essentially said, if you try to come out with a number tonight, it's gonna be judged as you pulled it out of the air, because we don't have all the information, and it's gonna go down in flames. And we should stop trying to half-bleep it and do it right. And to do it right, we need the information. And unfortunately, asking for the information over the past seven years has been unsuccessful. So if you want it done, get the information.
All right, thanks Bill. Yep, is someone else over there who hasn't spoken yet?
Hi. Am I up?
Yeah, you're up. Just because you haven't spoken yet. And then Olivia, we'll go back to you.
My name is Kate Boylan. I live at 20 Oak Street in the old Sakardi place. For those of you who know the Sakardis, I'm across the street from Gary. He's my neighbor. I'm a bud. I have two boys in the school system. Nick Schleicher was Harrison's baseball coach. He never listened. I'm eternally grateful for him. He's eight. He still listens. I worked at Wheaton College, and I'm from New York City. I'm a big fan of municipal, municipalities and services. Lightning can strike me now. That being said, I am very, I'm pro-override. I'm pro-supporting our teachers a million percent. I won't go into that now. But I'm very, I'm very, on the same page with people who wanna be educated and well-informed. I'm curious, from the Select Board, what you would like to see from your constituency in terms of being civically engaged to help with spreading information, fair information, not misinformation, and what we can do to make sure that we are obtaining information and we are sharing it so that progress can happen, so that movement can happen. So what do you need from your constituency?
I can say one thing. I would be always wary about information you get on the Facebook group.
Totally fair.
Doesn't answer your question, but I would be wary of that.
And I think that's, that's education, right? But like, what can the citizenry do beyond Facebook pages, which I'm not a fan of? But what can the citizenry do to hold meetings, to be educated, to work with you, to get solid municipal information and into the hands of other people?
I'll take it again. I would love to see more people at meetings, especially, you know, FinCom does tremendous work. They do, they do a lot of hard work. Nobody shows up at half of those meetings, right?
Usually they do.
And not just when there's a major issue like this. I think in general, people need to be more engaged, and that will, they'll learn. They would have known, what, three months ago, maybe, that this was coming? Maybe even sooner? 10 years ago? So that's the first step, I think, in educating the public. Absolutely. Anybody else can tell.
I would love to centrally locate all this information in one easy clickable spot.
I'm a lover.
Include the school stuff in one location along with the town stuff, so that everyone can read this stuff themselves. My personal preference.
So web designer needs to build an aggregate.
I mean, just go to send it. We can do it manually, unfortunately, but we can do it.
Go ahead.
The, having the information available is a step. And I agree with both of you. I think answering the questions about the information, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the School Committee meet, the Select Board and the School Committee meet weekly, 52 weeks of the year. The FinCom meets for three months in the spring, and then two months in the fall. And we dissect all of this. And our thanks for that, by the way, is to be told we're untrustworthy sometimes. And also that we were, but we sit down and we look at these things, and we have talked about them for two and a half, quarter hours for tonight, and still have only really scratched the surface about what our budget is all about, because it's pages and pages and pages, and $65, $70 million. So it's hard to have just the information available. We also, in the past, we've had forums. That's still not enough. I don't know what the answer is. But I do think we need to think just beyond having the information available, because a lot of people don't know, I mean, we've thrown out so many acronyms tonight. Most people don't know what OPEB is, or ARPA is, or SIR funds, or anything like that. And so to just have the information available, it's just not gonna be adequate. People are gonna get misinformation about from when they ask the wrong people, or some people in their circle, about what it is. And we're just not information at all. And then people will show up to vote, because that's one day, five minutes, and I can manage that. But they're not gonna come to three months of meetings, 52 weeks of meetings. That's what we do. So I think that's one of the questions we need to figure out.
I would, I would agree. And I think maybe we could link the meetings where you guys are discussing it, link those in that same location I put, right? Because I got most of my information coming in today by watching your FinCom meetings, which, thank you, was very informative.
And most of the meetings are, almost all of them, right, are on? Not all of you were here, because we had a meeting before this meeting. But I had to look up two years ago when I motioned a town meeting to pass over on an article, because I wanted to refresh myself, and I was two years old. So I highly recommend, if you haven't watched any of the, especially the FinCom, when it comes to this, I would do that.
And even though informational meetings tend to not be well-attended, I think we should still have one. And perhaps like a frequently asked questions section. If people have questions like, what is OPEB? We can kind of create a form that lists all the questions that people are asking, and kind of give answers to that in that same location as well.
I ask this knowing that like equitable, equity in terms of access to information is 100% in your wheelhouse. And I've watched meetings, and I've been a participant, but I just want other people to know that, you know, that they can be engaged citizens too.
I think, if I can answer your question, I have two answers. I think one is, what do we ask from the constituency, or from the town? I think, I think, and this is, this goes to myself included, I think we need, everyone needs to have an open mind. And that's what I would ask of people. Don't come, if this town decides that it's gonna start having meetings, and talk about an override, and talk about the budget, and try to find some kind of common ground between the two sides. Both sides need to come with open minds. So the people who always say, we need more money, we need more revenue, we need more money, they need to come and say, but are there some things we could save money on? Are there some efficiencies that we could get in the town, in the schools, in the town? Come with that mindset, okay? So whatever we do, if we hold meetings, come to those meetings with those, with that mindset. And then the folks will always say, well, you know, we gotta cut this, we gotta cut that. The people are wasting money, and people are spending my money, and they don't know what they're doing. Come to a meeting with an open mind, that maybe those people are doing what they can, and are doing their best. And maybe it's just possible that we just need more money, okay? So, but I think what happens is, is that, and I do this, people come with their bias. They come, they start with their bias. We need more money. And then they take all of the arguments that they hear from people, and they just put it right into that. Or they say, we need to make cuts, or we need to, and then they take all the arguments, and they just put it into that. I'm sick of it. It's been going on since I've been here for 12 years. And it's just not, it's not the way to run a town. So what the people of the town need to do is find a way to get engaged. We need to lead them and be engaged. And they need to come, we all need to come with an open mind. And I know that's kind of a squishy, you know, answer. But I just, I've been thinking about this all day long. Not even all day long. For weeks, I've been thinking about this meeting, right? And what it comes down to is, is that people, we need to figure out a way to get all, I think I said this at a previous meeting, we need to figure out a way to get all of these people, and all of you people, and all of us to figure out what the solution to this problem is, and stop coming to it with our biases, and then discounting what the other side says out of, just, you know, just discounting. So that's, that's my squishy answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just to add to that, I've been on the FinCom three or four years now.
Yep.
And just to bookend what Bonnie said, we have a public hearing every year. Public hearing on the budget before it even goes to town meeting, every year. At the time I've been there, you know how many participants there have been from the public? Zero. Zero in four years. Zero. So to say that you wanna be engaged, nobody, nobody shows up. So I mean, you can't force somebody to show up.
All right. Yeah.
I was going to say that I like whoever said, don't get your information from Facebook. And that I've been very clear about the fact that my office is always open for a conversation. I had a great conversation with one of our candidates for Select Board earlier this week. I think there are other people in the room that will say that, you know, they have asked questions, and I've been able to sit down with them and walk them through the budget process. I mean it. I'll meet you for coffee. You can come to my office. We'll have a conversation, and I will answer any question that you have.
All right. Thanks, Jen. Olivia, did you wanna come up and then?
So I just had a question. So you said that you'd have a five-year plan, in which, I was just wondering what that would mean for me, a person that would be, again, not getting that until I was senior year, maybe. So what would my journey throughout the school like be if I'm not gonna get that until maybe senior year?
Yeah.
He's just trying to budget five years in advance, not saying that we wait five years for this.
We're trying to have a plan today to get you from here to graduation. That's not at five years. Today, tomorrow, and all the way until you get to graduation, we wanna put a plan together. I wanna put a plan together anyway, that says, this is the funding that you need to get you from seventh grade to walk that stage and have one of these fine folks hand you a diploma.
We do not have it today.
Yeah. We keep doing Band-Aids every fiscal year. That just gets us through one year. So we wanna, yeah, we wanna plan ahead.
It'd be a plan that covers five years instead of a plan that takes five.
Thanks, Olivia. Are you in line?
It's time to go.
2:45.
2:45.
I've already started. Tell her when.
We don't need it all. You're on. Thank you for coming together tonight. I think this is hugely valuable.
Sorry, what's your name and what?
My name is Jack Conway, 27 Oak Street.
Really nice to meet you.
Just go 15 seconds. Yes, absolutely. I am very glad that I am no longer sitting in your seats, because you are faced with an impossible decision. There are just poopy options. And it's the choices between which option is the least poopy, right? I'm sorry for that. I have a thought on a compromise. I mean, the phrase is, a true compromise is when both sides are equally displeased. And what I'm gonna say is probably gonna anger everybody in the room, so I may need an armed guard.
We also want to now all know where he lives.
I agree with everybody that says, putting an override question on this April's ballot is a fool's game, right? It's going to fail spectacularly, because we have less than 35 days to educate people. And move the needle on that. And that is just not gonna happen, right? There's so much cross-conversation here tonight. We know there's a need, but we don't know what that need is. I think the responsible thing to do would be to, unfortunately, accept that there's gonna be some cuts in the budget this year, whether it's at 3%, and push the consideration for an override till at least the fall. You know, it's six months versus 35 days. It gives time for the collection of you to put forward a number that you are certain, you can stand behind, it's defensible, and it's clear and understandable. Then you can mount that educational campaign. By that point, those cuts, people will have felt them. They all understand that this needs to happen. That's all I got. I wish you luck in your decision. And I'm gonna go back.
All right. Thanks, Jen. All right, yep.
So I'm gonna actually kind of echo what Jack just said. So I've been going back and forth tonight and prior to tonight about how I feel about this, what I think, you know. One thing, one thing is not debatable. We cannot afford what we currently have. We either need an override, or we need to have cuts. That's not debatable. And Danny saying is not, I'm not your enemy. Math is your enemy. That's the same. So math is the enemy here, right? We can't afford what we have. Override with cuts. Those are the two things. So thinking about this and the timing of it, I think, I think we all know that the schools are kind of the albatross around the neck of the override, right? We're going to be the largest part of it by far. And as we've seen, somebody, people don't generally trust us for some reason. I honestly don't know how we can convince them at this point. But they clearly are still that contingency that, for some reason, thinks we're hiding money, or we're doing something untoward. So with that in mind, I think...
So, with that in mind, I think if you put the override right now, there is zero chance it's going to pass. I, I mean, I, I just don't see it passing, quite honestly. So, you know, I, I think, I think in the end, throwing it on and Sherry and I, like we go back and talk about this, but just throw it on every time and just, even if it still passes, I, I think eventually people become jaded to that. So, I think you want to pick your spot on this thing and I, I don't know that our spot is in whatever it is, 28 days with, with 27th from now, 37 days. I, I just, I don't think you can get over the hump of the schools quite frankly. You know, and Jen said tonight, and that was not a crazy, like, that was not a, you know, quick-ass number, that was, that 5.2 million is a legitimate, like, okay, this is something that we think is, is a potential real number for us. You're adding on now the free cash, that's, gets you to 6.2, what the towns need, I don't know what that's going to be, seven, eight, you know, 8 million in 37 days? I mean, Jesus, I don't even know if I would vote for it. I mean, and I, and I know the numbers are right, you know? So, and, and I'm going to say something else here and this is, this is going to be tougher me to say. Even if we do this override whenever, there is a chance it is not going to pass. There is a decent chance. We have to start thinking about what is Plan B. We're discussing using free cash, stabilization, et cetera, that gets us through a year and then we're kind of screwed and have no free cash and no stabilization. So, I'm starting to think, I'm not so sure that's the best move either. And I, what I say next, it's paining me to say, the, the cuts might be what we have to do, quite frankly. And, and it's killing me to say that because I've devoted the last 15 years of my life in trying not to let people go and trying to keep these schools as good as I can keep them. And I'm, I'm starting to look at this and say, I, I don't know that the solution, the right solution is not going to be hurtful in the short term, quite frankly. I, I don't see the world where that makes sense quite now, quite, quite honestly right now. Like, and I don't know Mike or James, if you guys disagree with me, like, using that money, spending that money down puts us in, in a bad situation and we may not have the way out of it. And we have to start thinking about that. You know, we're all talking about this, like, okay, we're going to, we'll do this and this. What if that override doesn't happen? Then we're kind of screwed, you know, doubled, right?
You're really echoing what Zach said.
Yeah.
Which is.
Well, he wants a five-year plan.
Right, but we don't need.
But, but I wouldn't, I would not, I speak only for myself, I'm only one vote in this committee, I would not vote to spend one cent of stabilization funds without a plan to replace it. That is put in the, the town.
Because you're, you're looking ahead to a two-year plan.
I think Zach, that's where I'm at now. I'm agreeing with you on that. That's what you're in a place where you don't want to be. Right. So, I, I, I guess that's, and, and we've had some conversations, Mike and I have had conversations with Jen and Sherry and you guys about, you know, is, is there a way out of this in the short term? I just don't know that there is. And not a good one, you know? So, anyways, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Unis, does our town have an actuary or a public accountant? I thought you had mentioned an actuary at a previous meeting.
I was referring to actuariales when we go out to do our final barring. Stand in force.
Okay, so we don't have an actuary? Okay, so who drives the actual budget process and who creates the actual budget in the town? You do? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead Rob.
Just, because I, there's comments here and somebody's over there, not trusting you or questioning that. I think that came from me where I was saying I kind of want to look at the budgets and things.
No, no, I didn't take it from you. It's, it's a historical.
I want to clarify, that was not coming from that direction at all.
Nope, didn't take it that way.
No, Reagan said, always trust me.
Just clarify.
Yes. So, that's what.
Yeah, no, it's, this is a, it's a historical.
I was not standing up here saying you guys were untrustable.
Nope, nope, never took it that way. I appreciate your clarification.
Peter?
Yes?
All right. Peter's going to be our last speaker.
Peter J. Wiggins.
If anybody has anything else. He's, he, the mayor gets the floor, the last.
Peter Wiggins, honorary mayor of Norton, I love all what you do for this town and I know it's going to hurt, but the mayor will be there for everyone in this town and I will have all your support and I'll have the support of the school committee, the FinCom and the select board and everything will be okay, right? Yes, yes.
Just, not to glamor, but I totally agree with, with Zach and, and Denise and various others that I just, I don't think trying to put it on the ballot is a good idea. I just want to, among many, but I've got to bear on that side as well. A dangerous thing.
All right, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have the select board make any additional comments if you have them and then I'd like to move to wait, to the vote on whether or not. What I'd like to do is do this in two parts, so I'm asking for your agreement to do this. What I'd like to do is do this in two parts. I'd like to do, put it on the ballot, on the town ballot, part one. If we vote to put it on the town ballot, part two, is we have to come up with an amount, okay? But I don't want to conflate those two things together. I want to just, let's have a vote on whether or not it's, because if we vote to not put it on the ballot, then we don't have to come up with a number which that would probably, well, I, I won't, I'll hold my opinion. You kind of see where I'm going. So, so, does anybody on the select board have any further comments on anything that we've discussed regarding the budget or putting the override on the, on the ballot for town, for the town? Go ahead Steve.
I want to second Zach's thinking on this too. I mean, on the last override, I was a no strictly because there wasn't a, a major plan for it, in my opinion. So, that, that will change, that'll change a lot of minds. I mean, it could potentially change my mind or a lot of people out there if there's a plan for this going forward for four, five years, so I do agree with that.
Anyone else? Okay, I will entertain a motion to, what's the language? Does you have the, do you have the agenda? I'll entertain a motion to vote to put a proposition two and a half override question on the town election ballot.
A second.
Okay.
You have to move.
Oh, I'll motion, so moves.
There you go.
For, for April 27th.
So, Denise moved and Steve you seconded?
Sure.
Okay, so Steve seconded, okay. So, I'd like to do a roll call vote. So, Denise?
No.
Meg?
No.
Alec?
No.